Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. It's 9:00 AM and we are in the John Nett's Community Wing of City Hall. I'm calling this meeting to order. If you have any devices, if you could please silence them at this time and stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a short moment of silence.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cook, if you could, please call to roll.
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Gambaro.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll begin today's proceedings with public participation. I'll remind you to note defamatory comments and if the item is on the agenda, please hold your comments until we come to that item on the agenda. We'll have public participation for each item. So at this time, and we will allot 30 minutes for this period. If you have a public comment, please come forward. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Chantel.
Hi, Chantel Pralinger. I'd like to talk about water. Ginny and I, we've been ridiculed because we brought the concept that the city was thinking about reusing reclaimed wastewater as drinkable water. And last time I was here, I mentioned the fact that we didn't have enough water. And you all said, "We don't have any problem with water." So I've been in this room maybe a few months ago, a month or two ago, and the question was asked, "Once the Plant 3 was built, would there be enough water for the resident and the additional developments?" And the answer was no. Now, what I didn't see at the time is from those documents here that are printed from October 7th. If on the first or second page, it says, "Traditional supply includes groundwater and alternative water supply includes brackish groundwater, treated, concentrate, and reclaimed wastewater." It was in it. We didn't make it from thin air. Okay, so beige water, it says, "Alternative water supply source is expected to potentially include brackish groundwater from the upper Floridian aquifer and lower Floridian aquifer, surface water, treated water, and reclaimed wastewater." It's still in it. And on the same page, it says, "The city plans to investigate additional means of aquifer recharge utilizing advanced treated wastewater for the Plant Number 2." Now, if I look at the other pages, all that is erased. And my understanding is, if it's erased for now, it's not erased forever because it still apply to 2030, 2035, when you review it. This is why I keep on coming for the water. This is, we have some assets, we have money, we have time, we have water, we have air, and all those things need to be protected. So when you authorize developments or even the Google Center that will use a lot of water, this is eventually, that's on us because that's going to happen. So please be careful what you decide and how you use the money because money doesn't grow on trees. And the water, once it's gone, I mean, who wants to drink recycled water? You know, as long as you use it for grass growth, course, and all those things, that's fine.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time's expired. Anyone else for a public comment? Wow, all these people here, no one has public comments. Where are you at? Tony, you got anything to say? Mr. Webb? No? All right, I thank you. Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any follow-ups on anything that Ms. Chantel just said?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Chantel, if you would like to come out and tour one of our water and wastewater facilities, we can set that up for you. But the City of Palm Coast is evaluating the use of brackish water from the upper Floridian aquifer. There are no current work or plans to place indirect potable reuse. There are other utilities in California and in the Virginia area and in Jacksonville that have greater economies of scale that are investigating this and that pilot process, but we here in the City of Palm Coast are not.
And Ms. Chantel, just to follow up on that, anything that happens like that, there's few and far between cities that are using that process. It would all have to be EPA approved and have to go through those rigorous processes. Just so, just so you know, okay? All right, anybody from the council have anything?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I think that my reading and understanding of that is mostly just aquifer recharge. So it's that water going back into the ground, trickling down, you know, hundreds of feet back into the aquifer so that it's there for the wells to then pull it back up as safe drinking water.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on the council have anything? Okay, we're moving forward. We're gonna go with Item E, Proclamations. If you're here for the October 20th to 24th, 2025, as National Medical Assistant Recognition Week, come up to the podium or to the dais and face the audience. We have up here, ladies. Face the audience and we're gonna read the proclamation and then we'll give you time to speak, okay?
Proclamation, National Medical Assistance Recognition Week. Whereas, medical assistants are the heart of healthcare, serving as vital members of medical teams in clinics, physician offices, hospitals, and training programs. And whereas, medical assistants perform a wide range of clinical and administrative duties, ensuring patients receive safe, efficient, and compassionate care. And whereas, the profession plays a key role in preparing the next generation of healthcare workers through education, training, and mentorship. And whereas, medical assistants contribute to the overall health and wellness of our community, making a meaningful difference in the lives of countless patients and families. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that October 20th through the 24th, 2025, be declared as National Medical Assistance Recognition Week, and encourages all residents to recognize and appreciate the contributions of medical assistants to our healthcare system and community. Signed this 21st day of October, 2025, attest Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and City of Palm Coast, Florida Mayor Michael Norris.
And a couple pictures and then you can have the... Ladies, go right up there to the...
My name is Lauren Ramirez. Thank you so much for acknowledging Medical Assistant Appreciation Week. And today I have Ms. Kaylee Ardon. So she is a registered medical assistant and she is a graduate of Flagler Palm Coast High School. She graduated, wasn't quite sure what she wanted to do, and decided to try medical assisting. She was very successful. She is the 66, one of the 66 students that we have provided the Registered Medical Assistant Certification. She's working happily in field, full-time, loving her job and thriving. And a lot of these medical assistants are coming back to Flagler County and working in field. So thank you so much for acknowledging medical assistance. Want to say anything?
Thank you. Okay, the people that are receiving the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, please come forward. Anyone here? You still want to read this one or you wanna?
That's up to you, Mayor.
Okay, we'll hope, we'll put, we'll table this one. How about that? We'll move on to the next one, which is Careers in Construction. Anyone representing the construction field and receiving this proclamation, please come There we go. Representing, come up to the dais, face about, same process.
Proclamation, Careers in Construction Month. Whereas, Careers in Construction Month is dedicated to raising awareness about the wide range of career opportunities available in construction trades. And whereas, the construction industry is one of the largest economic sectors in the United States, employing more than 5 million people nationwide and serving as a driving force in community development. And whereas, the City of Palm Coast recognizes and values the contributions of construction professionals whose skills and dedication are essential in building and maintaining the infrastructure and neighborhoods that support our quality of life. And whereas, by working together with policymakers, educators, and students, we can address workforce challenges and inspire the next generation to pursue rewarding careers in construction. And whereas, the National Association of Home Builders, NAHB, student chapters, like the one at Matanzas High School, provide students with invaluable real-world experience, mentorship, and networking opportunities that help prepare them for successful careers in the building industry. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that October 2025 be declared as Careers in Construction Month, and encourage residents, educators, and businesses to join in celebrating and supporting the construction professionals who strengthen our community. Signed this 21st day, October 25, attest Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and City of Palm Coast, Florida Mayor Michael Norris.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. We want to thank you for recognizing the month of October as the Careers in Construction Month. We are very excited for the two programs at our high schools for construction and the pipeline that it creates for our young people and the fact that we can enter those folks into our local workforce. Many times, it doesn't even require them to leave Flagler to get that full education. They can work in apprenticeships and they can even get their full education during high school. There are 245,000 residential building jobs open each month and many skilled workers are nearing retirement. This provides an opportunity for those who are entering retirement to mentor our young students. And this is a good alternative to a four-year degree that offers successful, stable careers without a traditional college path, which as we know, isn't for everyone, and that is okay. And we want to celebrate that as an, as a honorable and good choice for all people who choose that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna move on to the next proclamation, Down Syndrome Awareness Month. If you're here to receive that proclamation, please come forward. Close it in to the center. Okay, go ahead.
Proclamation, Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Whereas, Down Syndrome is the most common chromosomal condition occurring in people of all races, ethnicities, and backgrounds. And whereas, individuals with Down Syndrome are valued members of our community who contribute their talents, kindness, and unique perspectives to all areas of life, including education, employment, and recreation. And whereas, continued advancement in medical care, education, and community support have greatly improved the quality of life and opportunities available to people with Down Syndrome. And whereas, Down Syndrome Awareness Month is dedicated to promoting, understanding, inclusion, and acceptance for all individuals with Down Syndrome while celebrating their achievements and advocating for equal opportunities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that October 2025 be declared as Down Syndrome Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to celebrate the contributions of individuals with Down Syndrome and to promote a community where everyone can thrive. Signed this 21st day, October 2025, att- Signed this 21st day, October 2025, attest Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and City of Palm Coast, Florida Mayor Michael Norris.
He's gonna accept the proclamation?
All right, ready? One, two, three.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody wanna speak?
Good morning. My name is Chrissy Wilson. I am proud to serve on the board of the Palm Coast Down Syndrome Association, and it's an honor for us to be here for the proclamation of Down Syndrome Awareness Month, not only for me as an advocate, but as a proud sister of my brother Keaton. Keaton is one of the greatest blessings in my life. He is strong and resilient and joyful, and he has truly taught me a lot about being kind and very patient. People at Down Syndrome remind us that life isn't about perfection. It's about connection and acceptance and celebrating every small victory. I truly believe that this proclamation is more than just recognition of the Down Syndrome community. It's a message of inclusion, and it tells families like mine that Palm Coast stands with us, with our loved ones, that being seen, valued, and supported. As we celebrate Down Syndrome Awareness Month, my hope is that we continue to open doors in our schools, our workplaces, and our neighborhoods so that every person with every ability can have a chance to thrive. To our self-advocates who are present here today, you guys are awesome. I love you guys so much. And you truly make the world a brighter place. And to our mayor and our city council, with all my heart, I would like to thank you for believing that everyone belongs.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item F, Minutes. We have minutes to approve from October 7th Business Meeting, October 14th Workshop Meeting. Does anyone have any issues or corrections?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, we're gonna move on to item G, Ordinance of the First Read. Item Six, Ordinance, 2025, Chapter 44, Traffic and Vehicle Articles, Stopping, Standing, Parking By, Amending Subsection 44-34C, Parking and Storage of Vehicles Generally of the City Code of Ordinances. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. If you recall, this item was for consideration. There was a presentation on September the 23rd, and we have modified the ordinance in your agenda packet per that direction. Staff is here to answer any questions that you may have and look to move forward with the ordinance.
Thank you. We don't have a presentation, do we, Barbara?
I wasn't going to give a presentation. I have it available, Mayor, City Council. The ordinance has been amended by the city attorney by council and is available if you're interested in seeing it, but we've made all the changes that you asked for.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna say, it has been a minute since you guys met on this issue. I can just give you a quick summary of the changes, so you guys are up to speed on that, if that's helpful.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
So, as directed, you'll see for the exceptions, you asked me to make, I added paragraph B where it says attachments are considered racks, storage containers, or other commercial equipment that are securely mounted on the top of the vehicle. I edited paragraph C, the commercial vehicle and attachments must be kept in a safe, neat, clean, and well-kept manner. No loose materials or tools are visible from the outside vehicles unless enclosed in a commercial-grade cap or cover. And then I also added a extra section to paragraph A where that you cannot extend the width of the vehicle by one inch with the equipment on top.
Okay. Does the council feel that this is meeting our objective to make it a little bit easier for craftsmen and trademen and other people within the community, small business owners? Do we feel that this is meeting our goals and objective of this change to the ordinance? Does anyone have any issues?
I have no issues. I'm just not in favor of changing the code at all.
Okay, thank you.
Neither am I. Thank you.
You got anything, Councilman Miller?
No, I think this is the medium that we came to, you know, between getting rid of all the restrictions versus, you know, putting some restrictions in there but allowing for advertising and things like that. So, I'm in favor of it because I think, you know, we came to this middle ground.
Anything for you, Vosby?
I agree. I second the comments from Councilman Miller. I think this is a very reasonable medium to be business-friendly in our community. We constantly hear, or at least I constantly hear, the need to bring in working families, younger families, improve our workforce, and I think this is a step in that direction without taking away a lot of the restrictions that continue to make our neighborhoods beautiful. I think this helps quality of life and the fact that, you know, some of our tradesmen who get called out 20, you know, or on call 24 hours a day but have to park somewhere else, this allows them to keep a vehicle in their driveway without having to, you know, leave in the middle of the night to go respond to certain issues at all of our homes that we often have. The only thing that I had, this is more of just a technicality in the ordinance itself. If you look at Section 1, Subsection B, Mr. Duffy, it defines attachments. I wonder if that should be like a subsection under A rather than, because it says a commercial, if you look at one, it says a commercial vehicle may park in a residential zone lot if. And then if you look at subsection B, it says attachments are considered racks, storage containers, and then it goes on. That doesn't really make sense. That's more like a definition of attachment. So, I know this is first read. If we can maybe put that in a more appropriate place as a definition of how we're defining attachments. Otherwise, I think it's really important to point out for the public's benefit that we're only allowing one of these vehicles per resident. I think that's very important. This is, you know, one of the comments that I've continued to hear from people is that this will quote-unquote like "open the floodgate." You know, people will start to park trailers and boats, and there's going to be all this swale parking, and this ordinance doesn't allow any of that. This literally just allows you to put one work vehicle with pretty strict restrictions still in your driveway, and it doesn't allow any of the other things that our code currently precludes. To the extent people violate those, this amendment does nothing to promote that violation or further allow that violation. So, you know, obviously, it's incumbent upon code enforcement to make sure that this amendment, if it passes, is abided by appropriately. And if we do start to see abuse, then, you know, we as council have the ability to come back and put the restriction back in place. I just don't think we'll see that. I think that's a false alarm that is a little bit hyperbolic. But I think this is a great reasonable ground, and I think it's very business-friendly, and I'm proud that we're taking this step.
That's one minor change, Mr. Duffy, that subsection. Also, I've talked to Mr. Duffy before the meeting about specifically stating in the change, vehicles that are rated 26,000 pounds or less, because that's when you start talking about real commercial motor vehicles with the state, 26,000 pounds or more. And the example I gave was what we call a hotshot, and that's a duly truck that's used as a car hauler. And those dualies are typically rated 26,000 pounds or above to be able to carry that weight. So, with no objections from the council, we're gonna add that strictly, that rated weight class weight below 26,000 pounds.
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify? So, you're saying all vehicles that weigh 26,000 pounds or more? Is that what you're saying?
The vehicles that are being allowed to park, they have to be rated below 26,000 pounds.
Yes, sir. I think that's like gross vehicle weight, right? Like the hauling capacity?
Yes.
Yeah. Just as a definition of commercial, I think, is the intent of this.
Just, so we're with state statute?
Okay.
Any objections to that? We're good?
No, I think being more specific is good.
One more comment, and that is that we've restricted the size even with these changes of the vehicles. And my feeling is that in Palm Coast, there's 45,000 houses or homes, residences, and most people do have garages. And I just think that if somebody is really, the problem is the vehicle. I mean, most vehicles that we're talking about will fit in a person's garage. Not all, but most of what we're talking about would fit in the garage. So, I don't see why people can't put their cars in the garage and put their, put the vehicle, the commercial vehicle, in the garage and keep their car in the driveway. But I just feel that any move forward on this will change, begin to change the nature of the community, and I'm not ready to do that at this point.
I would say this, Councilman Sullivan. In our house, which was built in 2003, our old house over in the B section, my wife's expedition with the roof rack, the standard roof rack that went on top of that vehicle, it would not fit in our family's garage.
Well, millimeters. No, I understand it, and I said that, but I still think that, you know, you can make some modifications to the garage, too.
Thank you, sir.
I've got a follow-up comment.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, I've been out of town the last couple of weeks. When I came home, I saw a, you know, duly vehicle parked in a short-term rental across the street with a Sprinter van with a trailer parked in the grass. And so, and that's without changing the code. My concern is if we loosen our code to, you know, what's being presented, are we going to, you know, see more of this? And quite frankly, you know, the founding fathers of this city laid out a vision of what they expected this city to look like. And, you know, I do think this is a slippery slope going forward, and it's, we're having issues with our current code. So, I would expect that Barbara and her team's gonna be a lot busier if this council decides to, you know, pass this on second read. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a follow-up just to that. Thank you, Mayor. Could we maybe just do kind of a check-in in like six months and see if we are, if code enforcement is working overtime, so to speak, because there's been more swale parking, more trailer parking, anything like that as a result of this ordinance? Because to the extent that does occur, I do think it's something that we should track and be mindful of. Because if we are starting to see that this is having a negative effect on the way that people are treating parking in our neighborhoods, then, you know, perhaps it is something that we should consider.
Absolutely. We'll come back in six months and we'll let you know as an overall commercial altogether.
Perfect. Thank you.
I would anticipate, too, that there will be an uptick because of lack of information for residents thinking that it's still restricted and reporting it, and then having a ticket closed because it's not in violation as well. So, part of that might come with that data.
What we'll do is we'll go ahead and we'll put in there any, what do I wanna say, complaints that we receive on commercial vehicles, so you'll know that all.
And then the legitimacy, what is, what are actual violations versus what were non-violations?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Grossman, you can go ahead and send the pictures that I sent you, please. Thank you.
I took care of that.
And Ms. Kershaw, once we do the second read and we get this over the finish line, let's make sure that we post on our social media and our website so everyone knows specifically what the changes are and what constitutes them being out of compliance.
I think the biggest thing will be signage. So, that will be the biggest thing, the signage.
Yes, ma'am. And I do think that this provides a little relief to small business owners that are having to pay 250 up to $300 to store their vehicles in Cube Smart or wherever, you know, all the storage facilities, so.
And to that point, I will say, I mean, I get a lot of complaints about all of the storage facilities, but in reality, a lot of those storage facilities are at capacity because of the parking spots, and those parking spots are being taken oftentimes by commercial vehicles. So, you know, I think this can provide relief in a lot of different ways.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else from the council? Can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Well, Ms. Ponteir, can you rephrase that?
I will be more specific.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the ordinance with the changes that we proposed specifically to subsection 1A-B and to allow the rating of 2,600 pounds or 20,000 pounds or less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
We got a second. Any more discussion from the council? We'll open this up for public comment. Anyone, any public comment? Yes, sir.
My name's Brad. Been in Palm Coast for about five years now, and my whole life, I've worked in construction, worked in traffic signals, done emergency recall call-outs, and never had an issue like I've had here. I get that Palm Coast used to be a retirement community, but it's no longer that. It hasn't been for at least the last four years, if not longer. The rules that you guys have in parking, nobody else has that. Governor DeSantis just changed the laws for HOAs because they were taking advantage of people and saying, "Hey, you can't do this." And he said, "They're way out of line." So, he made a law so people actually, because they lived it, they could park their vehicle there. And you guys are trying to do the same thing, but he only made it for the HOAs because he figured no city's gonna do that. Everywhere, you could park a vehicle anywhere in the city if it's a work vehicle. I drive a $150,000 truck, and yet, it's a nice truck. But I get harassed by a neighbor, not me, but he calls the city. He lives three blocks away from me, and just because he says it's a rule, he harasses me. I mean, I've been, I don't understand why we just don't adopt rules from a nearby city. We are not a retirement city anymore. I'm working. I'm 60 years old, and it just seems ridiculous that I have to go through all this. My other comment would be on the price. If you guys are gonna cite people, then give them a price. Don't send it to a committee that, and I don't know if this is right, I've heard they've actually charged someone $5,000 for parking in their driveway or $10,000, which is just ridiculous. That's attacking somebody that owns the property for why? Just give them a citation. I work emergency call-outs. I run calls for knock-down traffic signals. I have to be able to jump in my truck and go, and, you know, you guys have, you're own guys that work here, but a lot of cities don't. I do a lot of FDOT stuff, and I just would appreciate you guys considering not just a regular truck, but like bucket trucks. I mean, there's a lot of utility workers here that do, you know, cable, other jobs that require a bucket truck. And just to make it a rule for certain types, you're still coming after what you guys just said. It's a, you're bowing construction work this week. You just gave an award for that. But the construction workers are the ones being picked on, and I'm one. So, I appreciate you guys. I didn't know you had a meeting before because I would have been here, but none of that's, I never had a chance to talk on this before that. I wasn't aware of. So, I'd ask that you guys reconsider that and add other vehicles. My vehicle looks nice. I'm home late. I get home. I leave early. I'm not bugging anyone. I don't understand why people three blocks away could call the city and you guys come and basically harass me. And I guess that would be my time, but I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Can you answer also about the tickets, maybe?
Right, let me ask you this right now. With the new change to the ordinance, is your vehicle in compliance?
I don't know because you guys didn't mention a bucket truck, and I do have a bucket.
We're not gonna allow bucket trucks. I'm sorry. That's a bit of a stretch.
Every other city does.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Anyone else for public comment?
So, one thing I'll add is I actually, we had discussed, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were coming back. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I've been living here for four years.
Hold the mic down. State your name.
My name's Elizabeth Texara. I've been living here for four years. I'm kind of emotional because of this ordinance. There's gonna be big changes in my life. My son is moving out of Palm Coast to Daytona because of the fact that we have this ordinance in order. We were cited a violation, and, you know, from what I understand, if we continue parking the vehicle in the driveway, we will be fined $5,000 or whatever, and... whatever, and it, there can also be a lien on the house. The house is not mine, it's my mom's. We moved here to help my mother because my father passed away, and people were taking advantage of my mother with not being able to do certain things around the yard. Where, if they weren't done, she would also be fined for, which I understand, because you gotta keep your property looking a certain type of way. I made a big move, came here, um, taxes are way more here than they are where I was living. Pay is a lot less here than it was where I was living. So I made a big change, you know, and my son made that change with me, because at the time, he was younger, you know, and, but, the fact is, is the, the change that we made is we were all gonna live in that house together, so we can all help each other, you know, because I do need help to get certain things done as well by my son. So now, because of this, I have to make a life change now with my son has to leave and move in Daytona, so that way, this doesn't affect my mother, because it is her house. And if she gets, if, if she gets fined and we can't afford to pay the five thousand dollars, the lien gets put on her house. So now she's stressed out, which is affecting her health. So in order for this not to be a domino effect, he has to leave, which is very hurtful to me, because this isn't what we had planned. This wasn't in our future, you know what I'm saying? We all thought we were gonna live together, help one another, and now we're gonna be divided. And it's not fair, all because we can't have his vehicle parked in the, in the driveway. And he works for a company that he is also on call, you know what I'm saying? So if he gets a phone call, he has to go out. And I don't think it's fair that he has to go out there and his van is too big to cover, you know, as, as far as tall. He would have to get on a ladder to uncover it. I, I don't think it's fair that he has to purchase, you know, magnets that would cost so much money, you know what I'm saying? Like, you guys want all these things, and nobody wants change. And the fact of the matter is, we all need to change. We all need to, you know, be able to compromise and, and I'd rather have somebody who's working and have a work van there than a drug dealer.
Thank you, ma'am.
May, may I speak one second, please, Elizabeth? Did I, did I not speak to you this week? Okay. Uh, I want you to know that she does, that there is a violation in the current code. Uh, she's been extended, uh, for her son not to have to move, as I told her. He has a van, it will probably meet the requirements, and that he doesn't have to move, and that it could stay there until the second reading, all right? So we have worked with her to be able to say that we are not fining her, and there is not a five thousand dollar fine. Her son does not have to move, and that if this code does pass, or this ordinance does pass, then he would be in compliance.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. So you're gonna be-
Then in six months, we're gonna come back, and if, if, you know, if you don't agree with it, it goes back to the way it was, correct? So it's like, my life is on, on hold, waiting for everybody to decide what they want, instead of just letting workers work and have their work vehicles where it's, you know, in their driveways where it's accessible when they have an emergency call, and they don't have to drive out to go get their vehicle, and, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, ma'am, I, I think you'll be okay. If we pass the ordinance, it's, it's probably gonna stay in place.
And what if, what if people complain-
Mr. Mayor.
-it gets changed, so what? Now he has to go look-
Your time has expired, ma'am.
My time has expired. So, yeah, would you back, and would you guys be saying-
Any, anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Tony.
Good morning, Tony Amaral, Palm Coast. Just two things I have question. Subsection one F, no more than one commercial vehicle that meets the requirements of section blah, blah, blah shall be allowed to be parked in a residential zoned lot, duplexes. You guys consider them two units, not every duplex is divided in the middle and separated as two separate parcels, so how does that qualify? Can only one tenant have a vehicle? If I have an electrician as a tenant, I have an A C company, but the vehicles themselves meet all these requirements, there's no changes, how does that work for the duplexes versus the duplexes who are, you know, zero lot lined, if you will, because there are several of those? And then, um, I do have a slight issue with the twenty-six thousand pound rule, not so much a duly truck, some of these trucks are running a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and you can have a fully decked-out duly because you wanna tow your boat or you wanna tow your R V, and that's parked someplace else. But the gentleman who is doing everything right, or lady, just to say business, who's doing everything right, just because he has a U S D O T number on the same truck, but leaves a trailer someplace else, based on what you're saying, they cannot park that duly in their driveway, based on the twenty-six thousand pound rule. And I don't even know how code enforcement would be able to differentiate between the two, because they're not gonna ask for registrations at two o'clock in the morning when they go out and about, because they don't even go on the properties at that point. So those are just two points to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any follow-ups?
Just really quickly, and I apologize, I didn't mean to jump in, I thought there were no more public comment.
I didn't think anyone was coming.
So two things. One, um, to the gentleman who brought up the H O A amendment, thank you for reminding us, because that was a discussion that we had, was the fact that, hey, HOAs have now made this move, maybe it's something that we should more seriously consider. Thank you, Barbara, for stepping in and clarifying, um, some issues with Ms. Elizabeth. I, I know that sometimes things get lost in translation, there can be a, a misunderstanding. I, I've never heard of anybody getting a single five thousand dollar fine for anything in our city.
It's two hundred and fifty dollars max.
Okay. I, I, I will say, I, I don't, I, I wanna make sure that it's understood, my suggestion that we come back in six months just to get some feedback as to, um, any additional code violations is not any insinuation on my part that will change the code, it's just to do a check-in, like, we should know and be tracking what the repercussions, either good or bad, of the policies that we're enacting, or what those repercussions are. So that's, it, that's, it's just an effort to kind of do a check-in on that. But there have been several councils in the past who have tried to get this done, and they have failed. This council said, we wanna be more business-friendly, we recognize that there are hard workers in our community, we want to help small businesses, and so we're going to hopefully take this step and get this done. So, um, I understand that there may be people out there who want us to go further, um, but I, I, I think this is a good, reasonable step, because this really is a issue where when we actually went out to the community and asked, what do you all want? And this was, um, I, I think in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, it was a pretty close fifty-fifty split. There were a lot of people who said, yes, we should allow work vehicles to be parked in driveways, and there were a lot of people who said, no, keep the code exactly the way it is right now. So I think this is a reasonable step, and it correctly reflects the desires of, um, what our community wants and can expect as, as, as small business owners and, um, in, in respecting our workforce.
Thank you, ma'am. Any, any up, yes?
Duplexes. How would the current ordinance be?
Well, the way I would look at it is that when you have a duplex, you're having two addresses, at least two addresses. So each address has one commercial vehicle for that driveway. So now, Ms. Barbara, do we have any duplexes that only have one driveway?
Yes.
Well, that, that, well, that, that's where, that's a shared driveway, so down-
There's a line down the middle, but it's one-
Yeah, that's, I would say it's technically two driveways.
I don't think we're asking the correct legal question, though. The correct legal question is, is it, is it by definition two residential lots?
There would still be a side A and a side B, two different residents, so that would be one vehicle.
But the definition of residential lot, what is that definition? Is that two different legal descriptions? Because if the residential lot, if both of them have their own legal description, then we're, then it would comply with this. I would think they have their own legal description.
Should we change it to address instead of lot?
I think-
I don't know that I would do that, because you have some that have, like, technically, there's one-
You do have some duplexes that are owned by one person on one side and one person on the other side. We do have that.
Right, but that's okay, as long as they have two separate legal descriptions. I would think you do. I mean, I read a lot of legal descriptions, and I'm fairly certain they, they, that each duplex has its own legal description. I mean, i- if that's not the case, then maybe we should look at this, you know, decide how we're going to define that.
Coral Reef Court might be one that you wanna use.
I can look into that further. I don't think it's a change, a major change in the ordinance, because I, I look at that as, you know, we're, we're just defining, making sure that if there is a duplex that is, has one legal description, it's, I still interpret that to be two residents. Now, what I can do is I can look at it between the two ordinance reads, if we can make it pass the first read today, and if I think I need to make it more specific, I'll make that recommendation.
And, and just for clarity, we're okay with two in a duplex, right? As two separate-
If it's two separate residents, I have no problem.
I am.
I think that's fair.
That, that the council's intent is that before he starts making changes.
Yeah. So, any further discussion? Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
No.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Hyperbolic, no.
Mayor Norris?
Yes. So we got-
The motion passes three to two.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to ordinance twenty-five, uh, twenty-twenty-five amendment, chapter fifty, waterway section fifty dash thirty-one definitions and creating a, a new section, fifty thirty-three anchoring. City manager?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. Um, again, this was workshopped, and there were no requested changes to the ordinance, and the ordinance is included in your agenda packet. If you have any questions, staff is here to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions concerning this change? No, they've been answered. And I think we had a discussion yesterday with the attorney, and, uh, some people have objected to it, but, and we can enforce it. We can enforce, we can enforce the changes. Does anyone have any follow-ups?
No, Mayor, I make a motion to approve the ordinance limiting the waterway section fifty thirty-one definitions and creating a new section fifty dash three-three.
Second.
I got a second. Any further discussion for the council? We'll open this for public comment. Anyone for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. Uh, Ms. Cook, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're moving on to ordinance twenty-twenty-five, uh, future land use map flume amendment for thirty-eight point five plus or minus acres from Flagler County, commercial, high intensity and residential, uh, high density to city of Palm Coast mixed use. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Um, staff has a presentation for this application. Uh, if you recall, you saw the annexation back in, uh, I believe February, and asked the applicant to comply with a few things, um, so staff is here to prepare. Staff is here and has a presentation, uh, as well as the applicant.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Mr. Papa.
Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. Um, what we're gonna present in, in one presentation are the requests for two companion items. One is the future land use map amendment, and the second would be the rezoning of that same parcel. As, uh, City Manager has mentioned, this subject property is currently in unincorporated Flagler County. In February of this year, you saw the first reading of the annexation. At that time, there were concerns about the, the currently permitted land uses or uses on the property. And so council, uh, requested the applicant to come back and, uh, present, uh, maybe a more, um, more information regarding the proposed uses, eventual uses for the property. So with that, what we're here for, a first reading of the future land use map and the zoning map amendment. When we come back for second reading of this item, we will have, as part of that agenda, the second reading of the annexation, and it'll be heard concurrent with the adoption of, or with action on the future land use map and the zoning map amendment. Current owner of the property is Flagler Points Properties LLC. The applicant, uh, representing the owner is Mr. Jay Livingston. This site, about a half mile west of Seminole Woods Boulevard on the south side of State Road one hundred, is about thirty-eight point eight acres. The requests are two, as I mentioned, the future land use map amendment from the Flagler County designations of residential high density and commercial high intensity to city of Palm Coast designation of mixed use. The zoning map amendment request would be from the Flagler County zoning of C two, which is their general commercial zoning district, and R three B, which is a multifamily residential, uh, zoning district. And the request would be to change all of that to, uh, general commercial city of Palm Coast designation, Palm two. And this just shows, uh, the map to your left, or to my left, shows, um, the current designations, there's about ten and a half acres of commercial and twenty-eight point three acres of the residential high density designation, and with the proposed change, that will all become thirty-eight acres of mixed use. With the zoning existing and proposed, again, same acreages, uh, about ten and a half in C two, the balance in multifamily, and the proposed change will change it all to Palm two. The applicant, as required by the code, did hold a neighborhood meeting on April fifteenth, uh, no members of the public attended. The P L D R B held a public hearing on these items September seventeenth, and they did a, recommend approval of the items at that time. And these items have been advertised as required. To get more into the details of the future land use map amendment, typically, when we do a future land use map amendment, we, we want to look at the, the maximum development potential of the requested change. In this case, since we did have a companion zoning map amendment, which provided for a maximum F A R of point four, we use that floor area ratio of point four to conduct our analysis. So as you can see, the, the proposed, uh, mixed use at thirty-eight acres with a maximum F A R of point four would yield, again, maximums would yield, or you could develop a maximum of six hundred seventy-six thousand square feet and change. Uh, under the current flume, commercial high intensity of about ten and a half acres and twenty-eight acres of residential high density, uh, in terms of non-residential use, you could develop about a hundred eighty-two thousand. So there, there would be, if you build to the maximum development potential and comparing current and proposed, there could be up to almost five hundred thousand square feet in, in, uh, higher development. But of course, those are theoretical maximum, and those are theoretical net increase.
Jose, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, would you mind going back to that last slide? Thank you so much.
Yes.
What are the other flume categories that, rather than mixed use?
Um, we're very limited in terms of where we allow commercial. I wanna say that industrial, as a land use designation, does permit commercial, too. I cannot testify that that is, but there will be no other that I can think of. Residential will not allow it, uh, institutional, no, will not allow it, um, green waste will not allow it, of course, conservation, no. So, yes, uh, mixed use is basically our commercial land use designation.
Is that per our L D C?
That's, that's for our comprehensive plan.
Okay.
We have limited, uh, categories in our comprehensive plan, and, uh, uh, mixed use is the one that, that was adopted part of two thousand and four, and it's just carried over to, even with the recent update, we did not create a new, uh, commercial land use designation, except if you wanna consider the M P M U, master plan mixed.
So for the, the maximum, uh, potential development, is this all considered on upland, or are we not considering what's buildable and what's not in this calculation?
These are gross, gross, uh, calculations, so this would be based on the gross acreage of the site.
Okay, and do we know how much of that gross acreage is actually buildable?
I believe they have low, um, moderate quality wetlands, so theoretically, technically, they're all, uh, buildable.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna ask, um, in terms of when we're comparing this current versus proposed, um, for the residential high density, what are the entitlements in terms of units there?
Sure. That, that's for, um, and, uh, maybe I, I need to clarify that, but, um, so these are the county designations. Uh, under the comprehensive plan, the, the maximum density in residential high density is ten units per acre, although- units per acre, although the extra, it's, it's really nine, but maximum 10, the extra dwelling unit per acre is for affordable housing. Under the current land use designation, or comp plan designation, there is a cap on the residential high density of 255, which by my calculation, really is equal to 28.3 times nine.
Roughly close, yeah.
So, I mean, it, it does get it to the maximum development potential of residential high density.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of capture that, that it's not just going from 182,000 commercial to 600.
Yes.
It's also, we're removing that potentially 255 multifamily units, so to speak.
Yes, sir.
Well, not with this, but within the city.
Yeah, with them together. I mean, so to recap, like, my understanding of how this went down, right? So there was a request to annex within the city. Annexation included a zoning for both residential high density and commercial high intensity as, as listed there. We said, hey, not so sure about residential high density. Mr. Livingston said, hey, the intent is commercial only, and so we said, if that's the intent, why don't we rezone it in that way so that we feel more comfortable with accepting it within the city? Is that?
Yeah.
That's correct. So, so yeah, I just, just wanted to highlight that this, the, the current usage of it allows for 255 units, and so this change would allow, this plus the change would allow for solely commercial within the city.
Sullivan, you have something?
Yeah, just, just a little history on this. I, I see where we are now, but back at the county, the original idea for this, this area was to put in a combination, commercial, residential, kind of like the promenade, where you have people being able to live and work, walk to work, things like that, and it made a lot of sense to me at that time, three or four years ago, to go that way, kind of maybe a vision of what we would like the city to be in, in the future. I think what happened is that the people who were going to invest in this decided that it just wasn't going to work, and that the only way to make this land, you know, profitable was to essentially go commercial, which is okay with me now. That's, that's a decision people make, it's on the highway there, but that was another attempt a few years back to kind of modernize the way we do things in the city, in the county, to, to have residential and commercial close by, so people can do what we do in many cities, bigger cities, be able to walk to work and have a little different, you know, it would be prettier, you know, there'd be, there'd be vegetation in park-like looking area. So that's, that's gone away. I just want to make sure people, that's, that's gone now, and this is, this is what we have, and we want to annex it into the city, which is appropriate in this case, and so I just wanted to pass along that.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Continue on, Mr. Papa.
Yes, sir. And so what we do is we compare the public facilities demands, and basically, we'll just run through the net change real quick. So of course, we're going from approximately just that 10 and 1/2 acres of commercial high intensity with 255 dwelling units, as the existing flume designation allows, to a flume designation of 38 acres of mixed use. And so what we'll see is that, of course, there will be an increase in the transportation demand. There will be more traffic, just based on the net impact. Voluble water will be an increase of about 23,000 gallons, and surprisingly, with sewer, maybe not surprisingly, there will actually be a reduction in the demand by going from, by really eliminating the, the 255 multifamily dwelling unit. And so of course, with elimination of, of residential uses, that also eliminates the need to calculate for concurrency for solid waste. The demand on parks will be eliminated, and of course, demands on public education or school facilities will be eliminated, since we no longer will have residential high density.
Can I stop you again? Sorry.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my, my one concern about this project is the traffic that it will create. We're right here on 100. We already know this is a severe pain point. We know, particularly, you're aware, Councilman Miller, that FDOT is not in any hurry to widen 100. We're already talking about impact fees that we may have to contribute towards 100 because of capacity issues. The traffic counts are going way up with this proposed development. I know that in the county, when this, with this property being in the county, there was, I believe, a comp plan, and it had a traffic limiting policy over the entire development, several different parcels that were in this development. I'm curious, and this might be a question for Mr. Livingston, I'm curious whether the applicant is willing to still be held to that traffic limiting policy. If not, my concern is how we're going to account for concurrency now, not when this comes back to site plan, which is what I saw in the presentation at some point. What can we work out with the applicant to account for the incredibly higher traffic counts we will see from this proposed development? Obviously, I'm a fan of the residential multifamily going away and bringing in the commercial. I think we're all hyper-focused on that, but knowing that 100 is what it is already with, with the current traffic issues, this is just going to exacerbate that situation. So I want to make sure that if we are annexing this in, and we are knowing that it's going to be a high-intensity commercial development, in already an area where we're seeing an influx of traffic because of new commercial, how are we accounting for that? How are we making sure we're getting concurrency, impact fees, whatever it is, that will properly accommodate for this, and not doing it at site plan? That's too late. That is not soon enough. And then my other question, somewhat related to this, is have, impact fees are even paid to the county, or will those be paid to the city?
If they're annexed and they come in with their technical site plan with the city, they will pay the city impact fees.
Okay, I wanted to just make sure of that. So th, those are my comments, and so I, I do see, you know, several parts of 100 are already projected to fall below level of Service D, so, you know, this, we, we need to figure this out, and I'm, I'm concerned about this one aspect of it.
And they, if I remember correctly, they were committed to doing that pass-through over to BJ's to eliminate, like, a frontage road? Is that correct?
Yeah. Good mor, good morning, Mayor and City Council. For the record, Fang Wing, Planning Manager. I just want to address to, of the Vice Mayor's concerns. The first one is basically the existing cap on the number of trips. That was solely based on a not really a good planning reasons for it. Basically, it was from Act Timberland of 54 acres, going to high-intensity commercial, and the trip generation remains the same, zero. Basically, there's no increase. That doesn't make any sense when you have that justification for the cap. So even with the cap, and as you can see, that I presented the voluntary annexation eight months ago to council, and council approved that, but you had asked the applicant to bring back the future land use map changes and the rezoning to bring it into the city before you basically go forward with the second reading of the annexation, because one of the main concern that you, you have is the residential component. What if they, we annex, they come in, and they're going to put residential there? So that's the reason why you have asked for the land use change and the rezon, and the zoning changes. So they are moving forward after eight months later, we review the application, they have provided that, and we are bringing it to you, and at the same time, we bring it to you on the November 4th for the three application, annexation of flume and rezoning for your consideration. So that is the process that we are bringing to you. The concern relating traffic can be addressed. The applicant has, is aware of the impact to the, the roadway system, but part of the state statute allows developments to move forward and to mitigate for their impact. So that's under, the statute allows for, what they call it, proportionate share. So they paid their share, and then we basically allow them to move forward. So part of that mitigation amount, at this time, we don't know what that is yet, because I, I just approved their methodology to conduct the study. So they will come back with a study to address the impact to the system, and then from that TIA, they will basically come up with a mitigation to address all the impacts within, within our regulations. So the other component is playing at this time, so that you are well aware, that we are waiting for DOT to come, to finish the coordination plan for the corridor from basically Old Kings Road to Belt Air, and we anticipate they will provide that to us around in December. And once we have that, our traffic engineering division will take over the, the coordination plan, and we have some flexibility in just modifying that plan a little in order to help the, basically, the operation of 100. And we recently hired a traffic engineer, Mr. Sean Costello. He's basically, one of his tasks is to look at the 100 corridor. So with those factors in play, and in addition to that, we also hypothetically look at the cap, and, and part of the cap was that, what was based on an 89 acre, that includes the BJ's and the out parcel, includes the Flagler Landing, is also include the Airport Common 2, equates to basically 89 acres. So the BJ's basically generating about 686 PMPK hour trips, therefore, remaining 927 trips. So based on the actual proposed development that they, that they basically already submitted for courtesy review, the reason is for courtesy review because it's not in the, the city yet, so, but we are moving forward in order to, to review their, their application based on approximately about 270,000 square feet of commercial that they are proposing. So based on that, basically, and compared to the cap, they would exceed the cap by 201 PMPK hour trip, which is equivalent to about 200 single-family units. So I just wanted to let you know, the, the roadway still be able to handle it at this time, but we, we know that in terms of operation, one is we, for concurrency, we look at capacity. For, the other hand is that, is operation. So we have the ability to do that, because once DOT have the coordination plan, they will turn basically all the traffic signals to us in order to, to, to implement the operation of it. And also, we have a parallel, part of the, the site plan, we have basically create a parallel corridor south of 100. Part of the Flagler Landing Development Site Plan basically show an extension of the existing driving aisle in front of BJ's that will go toward all the way, potentially all the way to basically the airport row. Crossing over Airport Common 2, they already had submitted a, a plan that we have reviewed that will also connect it to the existing Airport Comm, Commons 1. So in, in the future, you will see that there will be a parallel corridor connecting from the airport, airport row all the way to Seminole Woods. We have one legal issue trying to connect it to Seminole Wood at this time is approximately about 200 feet. That is basically under the jurisdiction of, of association that we are still trying to work in order to acquire that. BJ's already have entered into a contract that once that, that connection is basically paved and, and upgraded, they will basically maintain that in perpetuity. So we would have another connection as a parallel corridor south of 100. So those are all the factors that we looked at in order to address traffic, and, and part of that is that, you know, legislation allow development to move forward and mitigate in order to do that. So at this time, it's difficult for us to, to require them to do anything, because it's not in the city yet, and until they are in the city, then we have other avenues in order to, to handle that, so. But it's at your discretion. You can, you know, make a request to the applicant, and if they are willing to do that, they, they will let you know. Thank you.
Mayor, may I respond, please?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So, a lot to unpack there, and I appreciate the, the explanation. We have a lot of discretion with regards to annexation. So I understand that once it's annexed into the city, obviously, there are certain things that we have to look at with regards to flume amendments and zoning amendments, but when it comes to annexation, whether or not we as council agree that we should be annexing in this property, we do have more discretion. And my, my concern, and what I hope we can work out with the applicant, is maybe a TIA. I don't know if a TIA can be done by November 4th. Is that possible?
I'll let the applicant address that.
Okay. So, so, you know, I understand what you're saying about, well, if the proposed development comes in, it's actually only 201 more peak hour trips. There are people who would argue that we can't really tolerate five more peak hour trips right now. I mean, 100 is very bad right now. And, and when we're talking about that parallel corridor, because of that 200 feet, we really don't know if that's going to come to fruition. At least, I don't have any comfort that that will come into fruition. Additionally, even though there are intentions to make that happen, is there any requirement? And I don't think there can be a requirement if you have a 200-feet portion of this where there's no legal access right now. There's no legal way to, to make somebody give us access or to allow that connection. So I, I think there's a lot of what-ifs that we're maybe improperly depending on coming to fruition, that we have no guarantee will actually happen. So I'm, as it sits right now, I'm, I'm just concerned from a traffic analysis, because, you know, we, we haven't had a traffic impact analysis, not, not an official one. We haven't had our traffic engineer, I don't think, do a peer review and actually review a traffic impact analysis to see what the actual effect will be. And I understand that as the process goes, and I appreciate staff and the applicant being willing to say, hey, we understand that you all are concerned that we're going to be bringing in more residential, so we'll, we'll go ahead and do all of this simultaneously. This still opens us up to live local, which I have an issue with, but we can't really help that. Bless you. So I, I don't know what can be done. I will look to staff and to the applicant to help. If this council does not look out for the safety of 100 and the traffic of 100, we are going to be in even more dire straits than we are now. It's incumbent upon us to be mindful of what we allow on 100 right now, because of the traffic and because of public safety. So I look to you all, and I look to the applicant, to by November 4th, come back to us and say, this is what we are willing to do to help alleviate those pressures that our residents are already feeling.
Some of the same. I, I agree pretty much with what the Vice Mayor said, but I had a couple of, one question is probably just because I got here late, as far as when I took over in this position. Is the extension of Airport Commons already annexed into the city?
Airport Commons 1 is. As we know, there's a vacant lot next to Airport Commons 1. That's not in the city at this time.
Okay, well, that's another, another little.
Another issue.
Another issue. I, and, and also, the problem, if we don't annex soon, we might lose out on the impact fees if they were to go forward still as a, as a county area. So I think there are a lot of questions here. The biggest one may be that last point.
Can we hear from the applicant on any of the questions that have been brought up?
I have one quick question. Mr. Pontieri, you said that there was no TIA, but we did submit.
Mr. Livingston, just.
Oh, sorry, J. Jay Livingston on behalf of the applicant. You mentioned that there was no TIA and I, I'm concerned that maybe you didn't get that in your package because we submitted one for both the flume and for the rezoning. That's what some of these numbers are based on. And it shows fail, the portions of the transportation network that will fail both without the project and with the project and those concurrency issues. So I just want to make sure. We probably couldn't get a, well, it depends on what the TIA needed to be for, for November 4th, but you already have the, we have, the flume amendment one was not changed. I believe that one was accepted in its original form. The rezoning one had a couple of, it was, I would say the traffic engineers were confused by FAR and how it should be applied and it was finally refined down to the appropriate FAR. And that's the numbers that you see in your, in your staff report. So, I, I mean, that's not answering any of your questions. I just wanted to make sure we were clear on what kind of data you had in your file.
Yeah. So the data that I have shows we're going to have 1,500 more peak hour trips. That's the issue. So, so if, if I hear from staff that, well, the actual use is only going to be 200 more peak hour trips, then I, I guess that's the traffic analysis that I would actually like to see.
Yeah. And that, you know, that is the problem. Right now, we're at flume and zoning. And we know that there's failures. The biggest problem is going to be, and this goes back to this cap, which I think is a really good thing to have a discussion about, both for council and for the public, because this county comp plan cap was, is a perfect example of terrible planning. The reason for that is, is that it's a future land use map. People, I think, lose sight of what future land use planning is intended to do. It's intended to look at maximum intensity, maximum density, maximum use, so you can then plan for that. It may never get built at that level, but if that is what you're focused on as far as your planning needs, as far as infrastructure is concerned, you're always going to be ahead of the curve. If you artificially ratchet those back, understanding that property is almost never going to be built at that maximum highest invested use intensity or density, you are always, then you're potentially going to be behind the curve. This property has been sitting there with this artificial cap, and I'll explain what I mean by that in a second. And so for whatever reason, maybe this property maybe lost projects because of the Great Recession, 100 fell off the DOT's radar. When the, when the town center project was being approved in the early aughts, they were planning on six-laning town center, the segment of town center. It was part of that DRI planning. How that fell off the radar, I don't know. I know it was part of the planning, but now we need to bring it back into their focus. At the end of the day, I think the most direct answer to your question is, at the end of the day, if there is a concurrency problem, we have a problem because we can't develop without concurrency now. With all the changes on the state level, correct me if I'm wrong, but regardless of changes to plating requirements, administrative approvals, this, this individual site plans for at least the big ticket items on, on this project would have to come back to the council or the city, right? Okay. So I think that's also an important thing to understand because your concurrency review, the site plan review is going to come back to you. It's not just going to happen at the administrative level or at planning board. And that would be where we would have the final project layout, the final traffic count and traffic, traffic generation from that specific development. And that's where, if there is a concurrency problem, we would then have to negotiate prop share. You know, it, it's hard with commercial in the city because it's not just a one unit per impact fee, but I ran the numbers on the maximum, did you use the, one of the low-end impact fee generators, which is multi-tenant retail center, which this probably isn't. This probably is going to have a standalone, like big box, which has a different multiplier. But if you took all 676,000 and change square feet that the zoning would allow, the .4 FAR would allow in this project, that gets you to $6.7 million and change in just an impact fee. Now, a 170,000 square foot big box, discount superstore, which is proposed on the site plan, which I have a graphic of in my presentation, that's going to generate by itself just $4.2 million in impact fees. Now, whether those impact fees are being paid at the time of site plan or we are paying those in advance as part of a prop share agreement, that's what we need to, I think, get to. But we have to get past this stage before we can get into that. We have to get into that harder engineering. Contracts for end users can't be finalized until zoning is in place. So it's, it's kind of a cart before the horse problem, but.
Yeah, I, I can appreciate that, Jay. I mean, I, I know where you're at right now and I, again, I do appreciate what you all have done in order to line these up. But to your point, because I read everything, the technical memorandum that was done on August 5th, 2025 explicitly says that, and this is table two, there aren't page numbers, but table two, proposed flume trip generation for mixed use on 100 has an increase of total trips of 3,161. So, you know, and then if you, if you look at table three, it says trip comparison summary, mixed use has an increase of 2,397. We're going to see an increase, right? So the concern is, are we, are we planning ahead enough for this increase? Because we've been behind consistently. And this isn't a us thing, it's a government thing. So I, I'm just trying to make sure that we have the right data while we're making these decisions. We don't know what the proposed use is going to be and you're under no obligation to tell us, neither is the, the technical applicant. But I, I would be remiss if I did not express my very grave concerns about what this development will do to 100.
Yeah. And I, and I share those concerns. I think everybody, even the people working on the project and trying to sell the project share those concerns because those, you know, everybody has to drive on 100 and it obviously has gotten congested. We are, not just we as the applicant, but we in this room, city and applicant are constrained to some extent because of the T's jurisdictional road.
Right.
The one thing that we have proposed, which, which the conceptual plan, that's one of those graphics in my presentation, which we can skip over all of and go straight to discuss it because most of it's just restating what staff has already stated in their staff report. We're proposing three, 300-foot plus turn lanes to essentially add a second, a, a, a third lane on the south side to pull as much traffic off. That's the best we can do until DOT approves the six-laning. Eventually, there'll be hopefully six lanes and then also those turn lanes. But in the meantime, that's the one mitigating factor we can do as far as just our site plan design.
I have a question for that because we've discussed turn lanes similarly in other areas where, you know, continuing that turn lane past the turn essentially and having one continuous turn lane. In the site plan that I saw, it appears that it's not that case and that.
There's three, there's three separate ones that are broken up between the entrance.
And so my concern is like exiting, right? The, the property, then you don't have that acceleration lane. You've got to get out into that other lane. So, you know, I don't know in terms of the traffic engineering, what works better. I'm sure, you know, the engineers know better than I about those things. But anecdotally, it seems that in cases where we have those, where you can continue through on traffic, it allows for, you know, more adjustment for drivers and instead of trying to get out into that, that moving traffic in the two lanes. So I don't know if that's, that's a possibility we can look at as well to basically extend that turn lane all the way down through the current BJ's and, you know, that way it's, you know, all one continuous shot to that right turn on Seminole Woods.
I doubt the DOT would allow a continuous one, but whether they would allow some acceleration points along, there's three different access points and then, you know, the shared access point BJ's.
Right.
Eventually, we're going to try to tie everything together with the exception of the racetrack connection, which is.
I can just imagine in my head trying to leave that parking lot and you have the left turn, turn lane coming towards you, but you've got to get past that and out into that second lane in order to accelerate with the speed of that traffic.
Whether it's median cuts, turn lanes, anything on State Road 100 itself has a DOT review process. They're going to have the ultimate say there. I, I don't think that we really care one way or the other. The extent of the turn lanes that are being constructed are larger than what you normally see.
Right.
Expensive, so that's already built into our planning. If we can do something more with the DOT's approval, I don't think anybody would have an issue with that, but that's ultimately a DOT.
And I appreciate those, those turn lanes are fairly long in terms of turn lanes. But what, what I see out there with current planning is that you, you've got a stack of traffic at a light and you want to take that right turn, but there's two turn lanes instead of just one. And then you have to wait an additional three minutes to get up there to be able to take that turn instead of alleviate some of that traffic.
Yeah. Turning, you know, extending the turn lane at Seminole Woods, the left, the left lane at the light there, that would make a huge difference. I don't know what, what headache that involves with DOT, but obviously that's one of the big breakpoints right now is that, that left lane because it then bucks up the, the left lane itself and then everybody has to go around it. So, yeah, there's.
I think, I think we're working on that.
There are problems, obviously, on 100 that need to be addressed. We, we will do our part, you know? It's unfortunate that some projects got in before there was any real planning, particularly for my client, because now they're potentially holding the bag for more than what they should be. But that's the nature of development. You know, when you run into a concurrency problem, you have to deal with it. A lot of developers learned that the hard way when school capacity hit a crunch point and suddenly they had to extend, you know? Impact fees that were going to be paid anyway suddenly had to be paid in, you know, in some situations, a large quantity upfront in order just to get a plat recorded. So we're there, I think, with development on 100. Hopefully, if that process is handled correctly, we will be able to amass the appropriate amounts of money as well as get this on the DOT's radar because of the, the expected failures. I think the first failures are in 2029, are expected.
Yes, 2021.
So it's not that far away, but we have some time to plan for it. This project obviously is not going to generate traffic tomorrow or on November 5th, if the zoning is approved, there's still a site plan process has to go through of which, with the exception of a couple of maybe out parcel buildings on the frontage areas, you're going to see the big traffic generators come back before you at this podium. And if there's any concurrency issues that have to be dealt with, you'll have a direct say in whatever, whatever those details are.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. Like you said, you put it the perfect way is putting the cart before the horse, obviously. I think that this is probably just a warning shot from this council and hopefully from, supported by staff, that we are going to be looking at this very, very closely.
I would send a clip of this video to the DOT because, I mean, I know that they have a hard job. They have much more segments of roads to deal with than what, than this little segment of 100. But six-laning of 100 has been on the radar. You know, for instance, Coquina Shores, you guys are now seeing some activity on that project. That was originally approved as a massive DRI that we then downzoned to the infrastructure community that it is. That DRI called for a massive contribution by that developer to six-laning 100 from that entrance to the exits on the west side of 95 that would then tie into the six-laning that was going to be required as part of, not just town center, but all the development are planned around there. This is all stuff that was done in 2004 through 2007 and it's now 2025 and the DOT seems to think that six-laning 100 is something they should start thinking about when they were obviously thinking about it almost 20 years ago. So I think it's, we, if we all work together to get it on the radar, I think they will. And they're pretty good about focusing on those things once it gets in the right capital improvement plan.
Yeah. The new councilman Miller is working hard at TPO to, to keep it in front of.
Part of the, part of the problem with those SIS versus non-SIS and, and, you know, priority local projects on the TPO, those local projects are the ones that I have the most influence on, not the ones that are state highways and things like that. So that comes from above, so to speak. But, you know, making sure that it's in front of them as much as possible so they know this is an issue, which they should, but, you know, sometimes it doesn't work that way.
I would, I would love to know what number, how many millions of miles of roads that they're responsible for because I think that's the, one of the problems is there's only so many people that can track that many millions of miles of roads in the entire state of Florida, all 67.
So I apologize, staff, for really pumping the brakes on your presentation and for beckoning you to the podium.
No, that's what I'm here for.
But I think this discussion is important. I think that your applicant, I'm sure, is watching this and so we just need to be very mindful of this moving forward as we go to site plan because you all have done everything we've asked you to do and I appreciate that. We just need to be really mindful of this specific development and what it's going to, the impact it's going to have on our residents.
Yeah, I, I agree. You know, appreciate that we asked you guys to change kind of your timeline for everything and you did everything we asked. And so we only have one chance to get this right, so, so let's get it right.
Well, and to the point of what we're discussing, I saw you go in February, right? And we were always planning on applying for, filing these applications, but we wanted to get the annexation in to make sure there weren't any issues related to that because we didn't do a pre-annexation agreement. We just came in with a petition. The primary reason for the delay was traffic. To get those traffic studies done, to get the counts finalized, the methodology approved, that was the primary reason for the delay. We had to get a couple of other things updated, like our, make sure there was no cultural resources on the site and that kind of stuff. But the primary reason was that this traffic planning takes a long time, getting all the counts right. And so that's, was why now it's suddenly, we're in October as opposed to, I think, you all were hoping that I'd probably see you in the summertime as opposed to the fall. That doesn't mean it solves the problem, but at least we have data that was based upon, you know, thorough, thorough due diligence in terms of the flume and rezoning. Then we'll have an additional TIA that will come in for the site plans for each individual parcel or the overall development if they decide to do it all at once, which the way it's laid out, it's unlikely. It'd probably be a big box, secondary building, and then the out parcels will be probably how it's developed.
Thank you.
Continue on, Mr. Pop.
Yes, sir. So moving on from public facilities, we looked at the environmental impact analysis for this site. We find that the flume amendment will not negatively impact the local topography or prevent proposed development permissible within the flume designation. There are no special flood hazard areas on the property, though no negative impacts to the flood plain are anticipated. This site is not within an aquifer recharge area or within a wellhead protection zone. There are no impacts to historical cultural assets provided by an updated report from the applicant. There are no change on need for endangered species report. Those will still be required at the time that they go through site plan approval. And of course, there are, there are moderate quality wetlands on the site and those would require the requisite permit from the EP Water Management District and of course the city. Looking at the land use consistency analysis, not to get too much into depth about the proposed change, the mixed use is consistent with existing and potential land uses. Those designations are in the scale of development that's permitted within the mixed use consistent with the development patterns that are going on along this, along State Road 100 border. If approved, the 28.3 acres abutting Flagler Airport, which is currently residential high density, will be designated as mixed use. The potential uses in that designation, along with the companion zoning of general commercial, is generally more compatible with the Flagler County Airport. This, the current flume only allows residential. So, and, and then finally, the proposed amendment will not introduce uses that are not already found in the area that is along State Road 100. The potential uses in a mixed use designation are similar in type and intensity to those found on the surrounding property. Its consistency with a comprehensive plan, this, this proposed amendment provides for efficient land use patterns and not increased cost of providing and maintaining public facilities. There, there is a policy to encourage development in areas with the available public facilities, infrastructure and services. It's consistent with policies to designate urban densities and intensities in areas where planned or, where planned or existing capacities are available and consistent with the policy to optimize utilization of the city's existing infrastructure, public services and facilities by placing economic employment hubs, such as a large-scale commercial retail area, in areas that are currently served by the city's infrastructure services. So summarizing those findings, public facilities are available to accommodate the proposed, the impact of the flume amendment, the environmental standards for development will still need to be met. The requested flume designation is consistent with the surrounding land use and development patterns along 100 and the requested flume is appropriate for State Road 100 and it's consistent with various policies of the comprehensive plan. And based on that, the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board had a public hearing and found this application to be consistent with a comprehensive plan and recommends that city council approve the flume amendment, flume Flagler County residential high density and commercial high intensity, the City of Palm Coast designation of mixed use. Moving on to the zoning map amendment, findings will be very similar for both. Again, the brown blotch in the middle of the map to the left is your multi-fa, current multifamily zoning district. Again, the proposed amendment will change basically the entire property from a mix of commercial and residential to, to general commercial. And I will get a little bit into it about the potential impacts of the Live Local Act on, on this because under the Live Local Act, it does, the Live Local Act permits residential in commercial areas. So looking at the development standards for the three different zoning districts. standards for the three different zoning districts, I think maybe the, there's, in terms of maximum development potential, the maximum floor area ratio, there is not a big difference between the county's C2 zoning and the, and the city's Comp Two zoning. You, you see that within proposed zoning of Comp Two, you do have a maximum building height of 100 feet, but I think it, I think we can say that the proximity of Flagler Airport, it makes it unlikely that the maximum height in a Comp Two is ever going to be achievable, and likely 35 feet, the more, more likely permissible height within that parcel. With any zoning map amendment, we have a series of criteria that we look at and running through these different criterias. One, the proposed development must not be in conflict with or contrary to the public interest. This rezoning will provide opportunities for employment and consumer service. The location along a major arterial, such as State Road 100, is appropriate for a commercial two zoning designation. What would be permitted in commercial two would be consistent with the existing development pattern along State Road 100. The coordination between the Flagler County City staff, along with the developer to protect airport operations, will remain in place, and the proposed use on the subject property, such that those uses does not, will not interfere with the operation, airport operation. The fourth bullet, sorry, the fifth bullet eliminates the multifamily zoning district. However, as I mentioned, general commercial may permit a current, a mixed use project meeting the provisions of, of the Live Local Act. And we only, we only mention it here because if, if, there are exceptions to where you cannot apply the Live Local Act, and that would be, you know, if you're within a quarter mile of a, of airport runway. Well, we can leave it up to interpretation, but we, we're not quite sure whether that quarter, quarter mile separation would be to the property line, or would it be to the building of, of, of the development. And so to eliminate the what ifs, I think we just need to mention it and, and, and again, recognize that there may be, or, you know, if, if the developer chooses to, to have a mixed use project. But again, under our Comp Two, it would have to be a mixed use development, not strictly residential.
And because of the location of the airport, there's a pretty strong argument to make that you could not put residential there, right?
Yes. And third, and again, this, this amendment, I believe, furthers the City Council's objective to encourage and facilitate commercial development. The proposed development must be consistent with a comprehensive plan and the provisions of the LDC. Staff has gone through the different policies on the, within the comprehensive plan of which this proposed amendment is consistent with. Let's not impose a significant financial liability or hardship for the city. We have existing water and sewer lines that can be extended to the site and through the development review process for their analysis of development impacts on public infrastructure will be included, and that includes the, of course, the impact on the transportation network. The proposed development must not create unreasonable hazard or nuisance or constitute threat to the general health, welfare, and safety. Again, 100 is a developing commercial corridor, and with that, of course, comes the growing pains or issues, which, again, will be mitigated and further examined as we go through the, the site plan review process. But the development that would occur here, again, will be consistent with the development pattern along the corridor. And future development site, again, will still have to go through the development process, such as technical site plan review, and will therefore need to provide more details as to the design and operations of the site, and that's to ensure consistency with the LDC and to ensure consistency with the regulations regarding access to DOT facilities at its State Road 100. So, and the proposed amendment does not change the, the need for any vertical development to comply with the city's land development code, comprehensive plan, and requirements of other permit, permitting agencies, local, state, or federal agency. And again, another set of criteria we have to look at is 20603, consistency with a comprehensive plan. We view this application to be consistent with a comprehensive plan. We've gone through the environmental natural resources analysis as part of the comprehensive plan. Again, no hazard, special flood hazard area, no act for recharge, with not within an act for recharge area, no impact on historic or cultural assets, no change on need for the endangered species report, and the still required permitting for, for the impacts on wetlands on site. Its impact on the economy of any affected area, as a parcel located along State Road 100, I think we all recognize that State Road 100 is a developing commercial corridor. This amendment reinforces State Road 100 as that commercial corridor for the city and for Flagler County. 100 provides a direct connection to Interstate 95 and really makes it an attractive corridor to provide for services travelers using I-95. And as we know, 100 basically extends from Flag, from Flagler Beach to Palm Coast to Benel. And so we recognize that this corridor serves more than just the immediate area, and it can, and it's fact that the services offered along this corridor, specifically maybe along this parcel, will be patronized by residents throughout Flagler County, not just Palm Coast residents. Its impact on public infrastructure and, and services, I believe we went through that as part of the comprehensive plan analysis. And again, barring that we don't see a mixed use project through the Live Local Act through here, this change in zoning will eliminate the impact on school facilities and park facilities. Again, we recognize the, the net increase of about 1,500 additional PMP hour total trip. As you provided in the analysis, the maximum development potential difference, and based on a five-year window to 2029, we will have impacts on State Road 100 level of service between Palm Coast city limits to the west and Belt Air Park, Belt Air Parkway from Rimfire Drive to East Hampton Boulevard. Along Belt Air Parkway, there may also be some impact. And the analysis indicates potential roadway deficiencies may occur due to the increase in traffic associated with a proposed zoning. Concurrent and any mitigation strategies, including proportionate share, will be assessed at the time of your site plan review. Any changes in circumstances or conditions affecting the area? I think this amendment is just a recognition that 100 is a hub of construction activity and serves as a, a service commercial corridor for residents of Flagler, Flagler County. And also, the other thing would be the potential annexation of the subject parcel. The annexation of this parcel will require that the city provide the appropriate land use and zoning designation to the parcel. Compatibility with proximate uses, I think staff has gone through that, the uses that will be permitted on site, consistent with the uses you find along State Road 100, and whether it accomplishes a legitimate public purpose. You know, as we all recognize, we have a growing population, so the need for additional commercial areas exists based on that growing population. Its location on State Road 100, where you have the available services, water, sewer, and even four-lane arterial, will not always be four-lane, again, is the appropriate location for this commercial two project. And finally, the rezoning itself does not eliminate the need for fertile technical review to address impacts or deficiency that may need to be mitigated prior to approval. In summary, the public facilities are available to accommodate the zoning map amendment. The, the request meets the development, the, the criteria of the land development code, Section 20505 and 20603. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. And so again, at the, at a public hearing, the planning board found this application consistent with a comprehensive plan and recommends that City Council approve the proposed zoning map amendment from Flagler County General Commercial and Multifamily Residential to City of Palm Coast General Commercial, Comp Two. And just to summarize it all, we're here at the first public hearing for these items, October 21st. At the second reading, which would be currently scheduled for November 4th, we will bring back the second reading of the annexation, along with these two applications. And still, foregoing vertical, there's still the need to go through the technical site plan approval process. We're here to answer any questions, and, you know, the applicant's team is here in attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Papa.
Mr. Mayor, before you guys move forward. So, Mr. Papa did a great job with his presentation, but he combined both of them. So the first item was legislative, the second item is quasi. So if we could just get it out of the way, everyone go around and declare their ex parte communication for the quasi judicial.
Okay, you want to do that right now?
Yeah, because he already went through his presentation for the zoning map amendment. That's the quasi judicial.
Anybody have any ex parte?
I have none.
None for me?
None.
And then when you, when you go out to public comment, it's okay to go out for public comment for both these, and then, then you'll just do a separate motion for each one.
Okay.
I apologize, Mayor. I had one person reach out to me, but it won't affect my decision making today.
Okay. All right. So when we do public comment, we could do it for both.
Yeah, just do it one time.
All right, because he covered both under, under his presentation. What do you got, Mr. Livingston?
Well, we can put, if anything, the last slide up of my presentation. I don't really think you want to hear me say the same things that Jose just said.
No, no need for that.
That'll give you an idea. This is just a conceptual layout based upon what we think that we can build based on the zoning we've requested, and it's pretty much consistent with the periphery of your site plan that you've received. I would prefer to answer your questions and to not take any time away from the public if they have comments. I can respond to anything that come up there, answer any questions you all have. It's your preference. I don't want to waste anybody's time. I know this isn't the last item on your agenda today.
Okay.
I didn't have any other questions that we didn't already discuss. Thank you.
I think on the same place.
You find the, you find the man. Doug was almost ready to come up. He was, he was itching.
Yeah, just want to go to the last slide. That way, there's a visual, yeah, that works for me. And I'm here to answer any questions you all might have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does, do we have anything else from the, from the dais? Anyone? Okay.
Mayor, just before he gets in there, I just wanted to thank staff for, for the detailed presentation. And Mr. Livingston, you know, thank you for answering our questions and acknowledging our concerns, you know, from a traffic perspective, and, you know, committing to partner with us, you know, as we move forward on, on trying to mitigate as best we can going forward. I just think overall for the project, you know, we, we, a lot of people talk about diversifying the tax base. I think this is a great opportunity for us to do this for, for our city. So, thank you.
My only, yes, sir, go right ahead. Just, yes, I, I agree with those, those comments. I still very concerned on the, the secondary access south over to Seminole Boulevard, and that, that 200-foot doesn't sound like much, but it's a pretty big deal. And has there been any progress made in, in negotiating that?
Yes, we still in contact with the, one of the property owners of the Free Property Owners Association. One thing that we still have is that they still have vacant lands right there in order to develop. Part of that, we can condition them as part of their development for the certain vacant land, we can require interconnectivity. So we still trying to work that out with the property owners and the association.
We haven't made any progress with Race Track at all?
Not yet, but we're still in, in dialogue with them.
And to that point, I know I'm not doing a presentation, but there was a question asked earlier that I put in my notes and I forgot to address. As far as, so I left the cul-de-sac on the site plan, even though that's going to go away and become a connection to Airport Commons Two. The reason I left that there is that we're, you know, Airport Commons Two is, hasn't been annexed in, as was noted. And, but that is the plan. That would be required. I already have prepared the draft cross easement for that. It's just being reviewed by the various landowners. The reason Airport Commons Two hasn't been annexed in yet is really a symptom of the economy. I mean, they're, they're coming. It could be the next thing you see me here before you as far as an application annexed in. It's, it's part of their utility agreement. They have to get it annexed in. That was, there was originally a timeline there, but in discussing it with Mr. Tyner over a year ago, I think we decided to just take a step back because nothing, there was no activity occurring. But that will be coming into the city as a, as a prerequisite to getting water, and that connection will be made. So you'll have continuous connection from at least Airport Road to the, about at Race Track that we can't currently cross. And hopefully we can get that connection made. So I think that would be a great portion of the transportation network.
From our planning process, is there any way to estimate, you know, once this is built out, what that continuation, that 200 feet would relieve off of 100? I'd like to know, you know, how that would positively affect that road in terms of people getting out, coming down, taking the right instead, just using that?
Yeah, Councilmember Miller, that's really good to, to look into that. We already asked their traffic engineer to evaluate that. So once we receive the TIA for the technical site plan to develop the entire site, they will evaluate one, one of the condition is that they're going to evaluate with and without that connection. So we will know. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good piece of data that, that we should have going forward, trying to work out that 200 feet.
Anything else from the council? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it like this here. I'm gonna open public comment for the first, and we'll do the second.
You guys get your vote on?
Well, I'll come back. We'll read the ordinance again for the second one, and then open it back up. I don't think we'll have any. I'm, I'm opening this item up for public comment for the, the flume amendment. Any public comment concerning it? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dais. Can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I approve, I make a motion to approve the, the flume amendment for the 38.8 acres.
Got a motion to approve?
You have a second?
I did second. Got a second? I kind of screwed that up. Any, any more public comment? No public comment? Ms. Cook call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We've already had this presented to us, but I'm gonna go through the record and, and read the ordinance again. Ordinance 2025XX zoning map amendment for 38.8 plus or minus acres from Flagler County General Commercial C2 to multifamily residential R-3B to the City of Palm Coast General Commercial Comp Two. Any more comments from the dais?
I think the only comment, Mayor, is that, you know, to Councilman Gambaro's point, this is bringing in commercial, a lot of impact fees to Mr. Livingston's point. So as we move forward a site plan, I just look forward to what you all come up with to make sure that we're handling 100 the right way. No further comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we get a motion to approve? Before that, for the site plan, can we also get the numbers, impact fees, tax, ad valorem tax impacts, all those economic data numbers as part of that presentation?
Yes, certainly, we can compile that for you.
Thank you. I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second? We'll open it up for public comment. Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any further, any further comment from the dais? Ms. Cook call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to item H, Resolutions, Number 10, Resolution 2025, approval of, of a guaranteed maximum price contract amendment and a project contingency for Phase 1B Fuel Depot for the maintenance operation. the Maintenance Operations Center. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you recall, the Maintenance Operations Center is one of your top capital improvement projects on your strategic action plan. Mr. Gebo is here to present the next phase of that project and also highlight a few additional reminders of where we are in the project and future phases to come before this council. Mr. Gebo?
Good morning. Good morning, Council, Mayor Eric Gebo, Architect for the Stormwater and Engineering Department, and I'm here to present to Council an update on the progress of the Maintenance Operations Center and to present the Fuel Depot and PV grade improvements guaranteed maximum price for approval. The Maintenance Operations Center project has been a top priority for the City Council for several years. Major actions have already been completed, such as finalizing a master plan, contracts for design and construction services, Phase 1 design completion, and the commencement of site infrastructure scopes of work. The focus of the presentation today will be to review the current status of the project and to request approval of the guaranteed maximum price for the Fuel Depot, referred to as Phase 1B. As previously presented to Council, the master plan for the Maintenance Operations Center consolidates public works, utility, and stormwater and engineering into a single location and is designed to meet the long-range services needs of the city. Phase 1 of the MOC, currently under construction, involves the site development of the southern portion of the parcel, which includes the clearing of the site, construction of site utilities, stormwater system, technology, infrastructure, grading and pavement-based materials, site lighting, and FPL and TECO service connections. The short video shows the current status of the project. Water, fire, and sanitary piping is complete. Electrical conduit for the power and low voltage systems have been installed, and the stormwater system components are all in place. The contractor is currently working on the site lighting installation, and TECO will be onsite early in November to begin installation of the natural gas lines. Phase 1 will continue with the construction of the Fuel Depot, identified as Phase 1B, in improvements to PV grade. With this project, the Fuel Depot will be constructed and the site further developed with paving, landscaping, irrigation, site fencing, and associated utility and technology connections. PV grade will be reconstructed from US-1 to the water treatment plant and will include street lighting, sidewalks, a redesigned fire truck turnaround, and the required stormwater conveyance and retention. Upon completion of the Fuel Depot, Fleet Maintenance Building, referred to as Phase 1A, will begin construction. This includes the building itself and the associated service yard, landscaping, irrigation, and utility connections. Phase 1 will close out with the construction of the fleet wash facility just to the north of the fleet building. The future Phase 2 will be the final component and consist of the construction of the administration building. This project will complete the connection to Matanzas Woods Parkway and the needed power, water, technology, and infrastructure loop from PV grade in support of the western, westward expansion. Construction on the site work began in February of this year and is scheduled for completion in January of 2026. Upon council approval of the GMP, Phase 1B, the Fuel Depot, can begin construction in January of next year with completion at the beginning of 2027. Phase 1A, the fleet facility, is anticipated to go out to bid the summer of 2027 with council approval of the contract in October of '27 and construction commencing in January of '28. Funding for the site work project will come from the fiscal year 26, '27 capital projects. Council actions are for the approval of the guaranteed maximum price contract for Phase 1B, the Fuel Depot, with Gilbane Building Company, in the amount of $7,984,870, and a construction contingency of $227,331 to cover construction administration, construction administration services, unforeseen issues, related fees, and permit costs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any follow-ups from the council?
Can you, for the public's benefit, can we just clarify what we mean by Fuel Depot? Because there was a lot of controversy surrounding that term for a long time, and I don't want there to be anything in the media that misportrays what this actually is.
The Fuel Depot will be serviced, will be, to service the fleet of the city only. That is where, that is where staff will go to refuel their fleet.
Thank you. The only issue I have with this contract is paying for mileage. So this is a Jacksonville company. They bid on this project, knowing we're in Palm Coast. Paragraph 18 of the contract, under general requirements, requires us to compensate them, assuming in addition to the $8 million contract that we are potentially approving with them, personnel with car allowances 35 cents per mile, and then personnel without car allowances 70 cents per mile. I don't think that we need to be paying their travel expenses, particularly for a contract this size, knowing that they bid on an out-of-city contract. So that's the only portion of this that I have issue with. Everything else, I think this is in accordance with a longstanding priority, and I'm sure many of our departments are looking forward to this next step.
Thank you.
City Manager, is this, how is this contract for the mileage different from other guaranteed maximum price contracts? Is the mileage something that we've consistently done across the board, or is this something new?
Carl, can you please assist?
Yes, Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering. In our original contract that was signed probably a few years ago, it's built in and identifies what those general condition costs are, and what's reimbursable and what's not reimbursable. So that was part of the older contract. That price includes mileage and all their overhead expenses and all their costs are part of that $8 million cost, so it's not charges on top of that. They build it in and only charge us, you know, they allocate how many people are going to be on site, who's going to be on site, who's coming down, not coming down. You know, they do function a lot of stuff from their main office, you know, their account, and all administrative work is done up there. They don't have, you know, 12 staff coming down here at a time, you know, it's a few staff at most. But it's typical in the CM contract that this is standard practice for them. You know, it'd normally be part of a bid. So say this was a hard bid, they would build that in as part of their price in their bid. So that's the same thing in the GMP. They spell it out and identify who and what as part of their GMP price as part of the backup.
So, so what you're saying is that the contract price that we're looking at to approve today already includes their travel? So then can we add something to paragraph 18? Because to me, I read this and I don't think it reads like that. That, I just don't know why we need paragraph 18 then. I mean, if it's already included, then why are we, why, why does it need to be stated? And to be quite frank, I don't care if it's standard. I don't. This is an $8 million contract. We, we struggle to find money for the MOC every single budget cycle, every single one. We are taking from other things to pay for the MOC. And I don't, I don't think that that's a bad thing, but we need to be counting pennies to make sure the project continues to move forward. So I just, the reason that this would be included is I don't understand it. And if, if we are going to include it, maybe putting some type of cap. If they have specifically delineated what they anticipate spending on mileage, then maybe we add something that says that if it goes above and beyond, we are not going to pay that overage. Outside of the contingency, right? I mean, that's why we have a contingency, I guess.
I guess, I guess my question was, outside of this particular project, okay? All of our construction projects across the board, when we put this thing out to bid, is mileage included? I'm just kind of looking at it from a policy across the board perspective, because, I mean, the Vice Mayor brings up a good point. I just want to understand how long, if it's, the answer is yes, how long have we been doing this in the past? And, you know, just want to make sure we're being fair and consistent across the board.
This is standard in our C construction manager contracts. On our standard bids, what typically contractors will do if they're from out of town, you know, we had several contractors, they'll just, we have a line item called general conditions. And so the contractor on a regular hard bid is going to include whether he's keeping his guys up here in a hotel for a week, and then they're traveling back home on the weekends, or whether he's paying them mileage. He builds that into his general conditions. We don't see the backup on a hard bid. But on a construction manager, we get to see every single dollar and penny that is spent on the project. So this is, they have a not to exceed number. So they gave us, they did their breakdown of what it's going to take to build out this job and what staff are involved, and they can't exceed that. So they know if they go over on that mileage, they're not getting any more money than what is in the GMP for those general conditions.
And so my last question was, as far as capacity between the, you know, the Fuel Depot, if you would, at our current location versus the capacity that we're going to have under Project 1B, what's, what's the difference?
Well, we're actually increasing the aisles by, up to six. Right now, we only have the two. So it's quite, it's increasing the capacity quite a bit, with the option also to expand in the future.
Okay, and that was my, my follow-on question, whether or not we're, we're staging this in a way, okay? I think this is smart, I think it makes sense to, instead of invest our, you know, residents' dollars into an old infrastructure, that we go ahead and make, and make the move to investing where our entire fleet's going to be moving forward, so.
No, the timing of this is sort of critical, because our current fuel tanks, our existing fuel facility, the tanks are at their end of life. So we're kind of at the necessity to advance the new Fuel Depot or invest big dollars in our existing Fuel Depot. So the timing has worked out perfectly. We're winding down their existing fuel facility end of life and building a new facility that's going to handle us in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more question. I don't see the actual contract, so I see, and maybe that's because this is the contract, the clarifications, assumptions, unit pricing, and value engineering is what we have, but I don't, I don't see the actual contract. Is there a reason for that?
Usually the GMP is a supplemental amendment to the original main contract. So it would have been, there's two contracts, there's the general, there's the main contract, and then there's the general condition portion of that contract. So there's two.
That was previously approved by Council last year.
Right. Well, but more than last year, it would have been when we started pre-con services a few years ago.
But this is actually a change order to the, to the, to the original contract.
Right, it's an amendment to the original contract.
Okay, so where's the amendment?
There won't be an amendment. This is a, again, this is a, this is a change order to the original contract.
Where's the change order? I'm confused what we're approving.
The GMP proposal is a new price proposal, and it's just adding scope with a new GMP. We did a GMP for the current infrastructure work, which was an amendment. This is adding additional, additional GMP to that amendment by change order.
Because this project is built out in so many different phases, each time that we come forward with a different phase, we're bringing you this change order or contract amendment.
Okay, so is the, so if this is a GMP, I see in the packet, there's a GMP cost summary, and then we're looking about a half page that's incredibly broad, and then some spreadsheets. Is that technically what we're approving?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that is, is clear as mud. So for future, asking us to approve a GMP of $8 million, I need to know what we're approving.
Would you want, like, the hundreds of drawings and specs?
No, maybe just an explanation in pointing out, you know, exactly what we're supposed to be looking at to approve would just be helpful, because I'm sitting here looking at the clarifications, assumptions, unit pricing, and value engineering as if it's like the actual GMP, but it doesn't seem like it is? And there's no contract, so it's just hard to kind of track that.
An amendment was submitted by Gilbane.
Okay.
And it was reviewed by legal, that that's not the process, the proper process in this instance, the proper process would be a change order to the original contract.
Okay. In the form of a GMP?
They went through the GMP process for the pricing, yes.
Got it, okay.
So Ms. Pontieri, would it be better helpful in the future if we bring something like this, is the agenda item be a little more descriptive for council?
Yes.
Okay, that's something we can work on.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, are you done?
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Move approval of the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further comment from the council? Anything else, Boss Mayor?
No, ma'am, thank you.
I have one comment, just being the last guy in on this, is that I don't want to do anything to slow it down, because everything I've heard is, we need to get this public works.
It's looking, it's looking good. From that, from those drone shots, it looks like it's coming along.
We, it is, we're moving along quite, quite rapidly, actually.
You already got grass growing around that pond?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, we're going to open this up for public comment. Anyone public comment concerning the MOC? Yes, sir.
Good morning again, Tony Ameral, Palm Coast. I am a little bit confused, based on the letter from Gilbane dated October 3, '25. Yes, I know, there's a lot. And I can't give you a page, actually, I think.
It's right after the presentation.
338 of 914.
We don't have page numbers on the printed document.
Actually, it's on this one, it does, I'm sorry. Anyway.
Right after the ordinance, yeah.
That's tie. It does say, I mean, you guys can read it, but it says, "The proposal in the amount of $9,893,668.96 is based on the contract documents provided." Then it says, "A portion of the cost savings from Phase 1A has been included with this proposal, bringing the total purchase order amount under $7 million," I'm sorry, amount to $7,984,000. So what is our actual cost based on this? I mean, is it $9 million, or is it $7 million, because we're saving money by doing the Phase 1A first? That's, again, it's just a letter on there, and then I, after reading it, I kind of, the question I had even before we started this discussion, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? What you got, Carl?
Yeah, I can follow up to that question. In the original bid, we had some hard paving site work allocated in Phase 1A that's under construction, and that is really the concrete work that's going to be at the fuel facility. So it's really work that was included in the original bid to do some concrete flat work for the drives and parking areas. So some of those dollars are in there. In Phase 1A, the contractor had a contingency in there, and he is, had some savings, so he's giving those savings back to us. So he's basically coming in under his GMP for Phase 1A, and we're using those dollars on the fuel facility.
I'm sorry.
As well as some of our tax savings. So it's, it's one big project altogether. The original, the fuel work with the site work is that higher number, because there's some overlap of the scope of works between the two projects, the two phases.
I'm, I'm really struggling, I'm sorry. So in my experience, and I'm not trying to usurp your experience, because I know you have a lot of it as well. You have a contract, if there's a change order, there's a change order. Whatever's not specifically changed in that change order, you revert back to the original contract, and those clauses, requirements, et cetera, they all stand. But we have in this a new clarifications, assumptions, unit pricing, and value engineering, and it has all of these things. For instance, liquidated damages will be assessed on this phase at $350 per day. Is that in the original contract, or is it not?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, so why do we need this, then? I guess, I guess my concern is that we're, I, before I can approve this, I'm sorry, I can't vote to approve this. I would want to see the original contract dated 10/13/23 to make sure this isn't adding anything else that we haven't already previously approved. Because when I look at a contract, I look at whether or not we have certain clauses in place. And so for me to, to be able to, in good faith, approve what you're calling a change order, I need to know that nothing else is changing that we've already agreed to. Does that make, I mean, I hope I'm making sense here. I have concerns that in this process, which should be, hey, it's just, it's just a little change order, that's costing us $8 million. And I get it, it's a phased approach, right? We have this new phase. But I want to make sure that in this new phase, we're not agreeing to additional things or different things than what we previously agreed to in the overall contract. So I don't know, I know there's a motion, I just want to put out there that, before I can feel comfortable, it's not that I'm against doing the MOC or anything like that, I want to see this go forward, but before I can be comfortable voting on this, I would want to see the original contract documents dated October of 2023 to make sure that, in fact, we're not amending any of those original things that we agreed to in the overall contract.
Initially, that is why the, the GMP was submitted as an amendment to the original contract.
There are. There are no contract changes, all it is is dollars in scope of work.
Then, okay, so when we're looking at the guaranteed price maximum proposal, why are these pages, these clarifications, assumptions, why is all this included in here? I just want to make sure we're not approving this.
It is a new scope of work, it's an increased scope of work. This is how they've developed, this is how they submit, typically submit their GMP.
Okay, so, so with this new phase, essentially, we are adding all of these new requirements to, for this phase?
Which would be the same exact requirements that was, that was approved with the original contract.
Okay, so we should not expect to see any changes between these clarifications, assumptions, unit pricing, and value engineering than what's in the original contract?
That would be correct.
I guess, so my question is if this was all, this was all contracted even though it's in phases as one whole project, correct?
Yeah, they, they went through a whole separate bidding process for this scope of work.
I'm just, so what's the need to adjust the scope of work simply because we're changing the timeline of the phases?
Well, the, the fuel depot was never bid originally. We bid a portion of work.
So that wasn't a portion, that wasn't part of the original contract?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so phase, first phase was a site plan, right?
Yes.
Right, which is $12 million that this council approved, right? And it's, and it's, and it's going in the right direction. This is, this is a phase that normally would come in later in the project, but there's an opportunity to, to save the city and our taxpayers' funds by executing this project sooner than later because of the life cycle of our current fuel stations, correct?
That, and logistically, it works, it made more sense to develop the site from the south to the north. And now particularly with the deterioration of PV grade, we didn't want to do the improvements to PV grade, then have construction, have construction traffic traveling along an improved road. That's why the fuel depot is going to be done first. Once this first Phase 1B is done with the improvements to PV grade, then the further development can happen from the north. They can access the site from the north, they won't have any traffic along PV grade. But there were multiple reasons why this, this fuel depot was the next phase.
Okay, and then, so for that, the first phase for the 12 million, we're under budget? We're on track? Where are we at?
We're, we're, we're under budget. We did move some of the site work, you know, we, we had so many square feet of concrete flat work to do in the, in the original bid, and we basically said, we want all, all of the fuel facility done. The contractor is giving us money back. He carried a contingency in his guaranteed maximum price, and he had savings, so he is giving that back to us, so it is, is under budget, yes.
And then in order to execute this change order, right, we're, we're actually, the resolution is to approve the reduced price?
Right, because we're using the cost savings from Phase 1 to help fund the phase, the fuel depot phase.
Okay.
Marcus, I have a question. If I vote to approve this today, and then look at the original contract, because I'm sorry, this isn't sitting right with me. I don't know why they would need to add all of these new things.
How about this, Vice Mayor?
But, sorry, go ahead.
How about, how about this? You vote not, we'll get the contract, take a look at the contract, if you find something, you can motion for reconsideration.
Well, no, you have to be in the voting majority to do that, so that was going to be my question. Next meeting is a workshop, the meeting after that, I'll be out because I have a jury trial. Do I need to, so my concern is that if I, can I motion for reconsideration at the workshop?
No.
That's a concern.
At the next business meeting.
No, we, this council is supposed to be making motions on official actions at business meetings.
Right.
So I would recommend if you would want to do a motion for reconsideration at the next business meeting.
Well, I won't be here, so that's my concern. So I, I would ask to table this, and the reason is if you, if you look at what they submitted, it says, they actually submitted on October 3, all of these things, and if it's just a change order, why do that? Why submit all of these new things if nothing else is supposed to change except for that scope of work? Why submit this? It doesn't sit right with me. I, I'm afraid that we're getting new terms that we did not originally agree to.
Vice Mayor, can I offer something?
Sure.
Okay. If we all agree to move forward to this today, and at the workshop next week, you say, hey, I have a problem because I've had time now to look at the contract, I'll personally make the motion to reconsider on your behalf, or for the council.
For any of us, Cook.
Yeah. Because, because if there, if you find an issue, then we certainly have to address it.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that, and I, and I appreciate that alternative resolution. So yeah, if we can get the original contract, I would suggest all of council.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see it.
Get the original contract.
Which motion do we have on the floor right now?
It's to approve the resolution.
Yeah. Nothing's been changed on that yet. That's the, that's the option or?
Correct, yeah, because I, I don't want to delay it unnecessarily. I just see a lot of things that get slipped under the rug, not, not with us, just with contracts in general, so it's just not, it's just not hitting me right.
When was the original contract?
I think it was 2023. And just to clarify, when she did mention liquidated damages, some of our contracts say the LDs will be established at time of GMP, so that could be a reason why those dollars were set, but I think it matches Phase 1A.
Right, because we don't have the contract.
Right, we'd have to go back and double check that. But I think it's what we currently have in the current work is what those LDs are.
And this is a very familiar process that we've done. Gil Bane built this building, Gil Bane built the Southern Recreation Center that was also built in phases, so we're following a typical practice that we've done for our construction contracts that are in phases.
I hope there's nothing to be found, and it's much to do about nothing, but we're going to make sure.
But my offer still stands. If you, if you come online next week, say there's an issue, we'll, we'll address it.
Anyone?
Yeah.
You probably have the contract in your email because you were on the council back then.
That was a long time ago, I think it was August of 2023, so yeah.
Go search and, okay, so we, we got a motion. Everybody comfortable? If we find issues, we can bring them up. Ms. Cook?
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
A very heavy yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to item 11, Resolution 2025XX, approving construction contract, work order for CEI Services and a project contingent for the Waterfront Park Phase 2 project. City manager?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Another phased project here at Waterfront Park. We're looking to hopefully bring this one home. We have worked very tirelessly with the Florida Inland Navigation District to acquire grants for this project, and now we are looking to add an event pavilion and some additional parking to the favorite waterfront park. And Mr. Gibbo has a presentation.
Once again, Council Mayor Eric Gibbo, architect with the Stormwater and Engineering Department, and I'm here with James Hurst, Parks and Recreation Director, and we are pleased to present our request to approve the construction contract for the Waterfront Park, Waterfront Park Parking Lot Expansion Project. The City of Palm Coast has benefited from a great relationship with FINE. This slide identifies some of the successful projects that have resulted from this relationship, including the FINE-sponsored inter-coastal cleanup event, Long Creek Navigation enhancements, the intracoastal Trail Children's Memorial Garden, and Waterfront Park. Waterfront Park truly is a crossroads of recreation within the city, being the only park in the city located along the intracoastal waterway. This park is an important asset to the city due to its location along the intracoastal and its adjacency and connection to other beautiful, FINE-funded city parks and amenities, such as Social King Park, Long Creek Nature Preserve, and Bing's Landing. This slide demonstrates the history that FINE has played in the development of the city's waterways going back to 2012, with more than $1.5 million in awards to date. Phase 1 of Waterfront Park project included the dredging of the canal, concrete pad installation to support amenities associated with the kayak launch, shoreline stabilization, floating dock installation, and general site work. Phase 1 was completed in August of 2023. Funding for Phase 2 of the project is through grant awards received in 2023, 2024, and the balance of a grant not fully utilized from 2022. This expansion will provide additional parking and amenity accessibility to support the work completed in Phase 1. It will allow ease of access to the intracoastal waterway and the newly constructed kayak launch, and will provide for the construction of an events pavilion and on the previously constructed concrete slab that will allow for greater flexibility for the use of the park. The adjacency of the, of the proposed pavilion to the new parking drop-off will allow for a variety of uses from citizen-initiated gatherings to larger city functions and events. This will further increase the attendance of the park and expand the potential uses. This phase will also include additional educational and informational kiosks, replacement of deteriorated site furnishings, installation of new furnishings, and upgraded sightline to enhance the park's security and safety. The construction of the proposed pavilion would provide for 3,600 square feet of covered gathering space with an adjacent 2,400 square feet of open area to be used for a variety of other functions. The structure is strategically located adjacent to the future parking lot drop-off for ease of access. The goal of this and all of the previous projects was to make Waterfront Park a true destination along the intracoastal and not just a brief stopping point along the trail system. The amenity will, this amenity will allow visitors to the park to spend the day enjoying the connection to the beautiful waterway. The, the location and orientation of the pavilion also allows for fantastic views of the intracoastal and an unobstructed connection to the covered and uncovered areas. The construction documents for Phase 2 have been completed and permits have been issued. If approved by council, Phase 2 will begin construction in January of 2026, finishing up by late fall. The project went out to bid in September with four responsive bidders. Staff is requesting council approval of the contract with American Civil Construction in the amount of $1,271,331. CEI Services with CPH in the amount of $28,485, and a construction contingency of $128,000. Thank you. Any questions you may have?
So that, go back to that picture that shows that over, that cover, covered, covered area. Is this, is that supposed to be a graphic representation of it?
Yes, yes, sir.
Very accurate? That would be 3,600, 3,600 square feet?
Correct, yes, 60 by 60 pavilion.
Okay. Just give me a ballpark of this building, how, how big is that? Would it be bigger than this room?
Not quite as big as this room.
Okay. I was thinking of something like for, like, multiple family yard sales or a farmer's market and stuff like that, but it's not that, it's not that big. Anything for the council? Any concerns?
I just, Mr. Mayor, I think the parking is much needed, I mean, just, just from my cigar club alone.
Oh, yeah, I know.
We, we do get, I get multiple questions about, you know, the next phase of this as well, when that's going to happen, so it's good to see it moving forward. And also, just want to say thanks to Commissioner Stapleford and FINE for, you know, always putting us first in terms of supporting our parks and especially along the waterways.
I, I would agree, and, and I do think this will increase use of the park, that section of the park over where the kayak launch is, which, I don't think, I mean, I'm just, this is rumors, but that it has not been as much use in that part of the park as we thought. I was there when we opened it, and so this is, this is really the finalization of that, and I think will significantly improve use.
Yeah, the, the feedback I have gotten is the, the distance to get that, your kayak over to, to that launch. With this parking lot right there, it should significantly increase the usage.
That'd fix that. And I also think that in the future, with like the boat parade and, and things like that, you know, vendors being able to set up down there and make a good time of it and not having, having to transport so many people in and out of there.
Well, even the people that paint, there's a lot of people that go out to the park and paint, and they're sitting on that hot concrete pad, and I'm always like, God, you got to be so hot, painting, but no, I, I, you know, I look forward to this. I, I second what Councilman Miller said. Thank you to Randy Stapleford and to FINE for always really going, I think, above and beyond for our, our parks and trails and things like that, so thank you.
Thank you. Can we get a motion, a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second.
Got a second? Anything else from the dais? Open up the public comment. See, and that will come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to item I, Discussion 12, Proposed Confidential Settlement Agreement. Marcus?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, as you guys have reviewed, we have proposed confidential settlement agreement from the active litigation of City of Palm Coast versus BBI Construction Management. We have come into negotiation with an additional settlement party. This is a previous party that was not, did not have a settlement agreement with us, so before you, for your review, is this confidential settlement, if, what I'm looking for is if this council approves it, you make a motion, and in that motion, asking the city manager to sign on behalf of the city council, the settlement agreement. Standing by for any questions.
Thank you. Everyone has reviewed the confidential settlement. Anybody have any issues? Can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the confidential settlement.
Second.
Got a second?
With the city manager signing on behalf of the city.
With the city manager signing on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
We got a motion, a second, really can't open up for public discussion because it's confidential. Anything else from the council? Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to item J, the Consent Agenda. I'm sure we're going to have some discussion on this. Anyone have any, anything they want to specifically?
I'd like to discuss 19 and 22. With 19, I just wanted to know, this was the resolution approving construction contracts for the trenchless pipe rehabilitation, and it looks like, it says there's 10 different pipe segments. I just was curious as to how we chose which segments we were going to put these funds towards. Good morning, Carmela.
Carmela Morales, Smart Engineering. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So we selected basically, based on priority, the sites, these 10 locations, based off inspections, needs, impact to traffic, right? Some of these go under heavy roads where it makes more sense to line them rather than do an open cut and detour lots of traffic. We've talked about traffic for hours this morning, right? Those are some of the thoughts that go behind when we select these kinds of, they're at the top of some of the priority list, and just FYI, there will be more piping. As you're all aware, the majority of the stormwater infrastructure was installed in the 70s, right? So it's all around the same age, right? We're talking, some of them have been replaced along the years, but we're talking 40, 50-year-old metal pipes with water in them, so we have to start thinking about, you know, our replacement or in this case, it's a lining list, right, to reestablish it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more thing. Why on earth is it taking so long up on the north end? What, what's going on there? Those trucks are always right there across from those townhouses, it's like, they never leave. So what's going on up there?
We're, we're talking about the belt hair, transit rehab that's currently ongoing, yeah. They, they're still on pace to finish by the end of the fiscal year. Right now, when this week is over, they would have completed 12 of the 17 pipes that are slated as part of that contract.
Yeah.
They would have five left. It's a sequence of how things are done there, where you have to first go in there and kind of clean it, then you have to send the crews in to go and do repairs, more specific, not just line it, sometimes you have to do some grout work, you have to inject some grout through the pipe to kind of reestablish the soils that are around it, right, so it doesn't just kind of collapse on you. It's, it's a process. The rain obviously played a number in, in this, right? So they, they'll do a lot of prep work, they finish some stuff, they come back, and next day, we got two inches of rain overnight or over the weekend, now they're debottling for a day and a half. So there is, there's always delays when you do construction in the rainy part of the season, yeah.
So is that just their access point, and they're moving further down?
They're moving further down, yeah. They're continuing, correct.
Okay, so that's like their main access. That's why that truck is always, it's right there by your house, right, Tom?
Yeah, absolutely. It's at my turn.
It's, it's kind of a stationing, but the close, the lane closures kind of keep moving. They usually only close about two or three of the pipes that they're working on, and then they'll move on forward. But it's, again, it's a process, right? You gotta, gotta clean them, you gotta grout them, you gotta stabilize the soils, and you come back and do the, the spin cast. It just takes a while.
My only question in regards to that is, you said we've gotten the majority of the pipes that we were planning on working on. I know there was kind of like three different phases or segments when we had looked at this. So we're, we're still going to be accessing those through the north side. We're not going to continue down in front of Indian Trails and Belt Air to access, or will we?
I, I'm not that familiar with the project. I have a project manager that works on it, and I get filled in to the major details. That's a little more specific than I'm aware of.
The, the access points that they've used so far have been primarily on the far north end of those segments. If we've completed two-thirds of it, only accessing through those, I imagine that we're accessing through and then, you know, repairing farther down the line.
Mayor, City Council, why don't we email you an update to that project because it's not related to the current agenda item?
Sure.
I'd be glad to do that, yeah.
Thank you.
We won't monopolize the meeting for that, yep.
Thank you.
Thank the city manager. Welcome to get out of here. What, what do you have on 22, Vice Mayor?
For 22, this is the approval of the cultural arts grants. I've, I'm going to vote for approval for those in, I think, FC3 for facilitating the grants. I don't want to take away from any of the grantees this year. However, I would ask for consensus from council to tighten up the parameters for the grants moving forward. The reason I say that, I went ahead and looked at the grant applications that were submitted for approval, and some of them are very vague with regards to what programming, what events, et cetera, they are asking for grant monies for. And the reason I think it's important that we be more specific as to what we are going to approve is kind of multifaceted. First and foremost are taxpayer dollars, and we should not be fully funding FC3s, or I'm sorry, not FC3s, nonprofits, 501(c)(3s). So, and I, and I know that in these grants, we're not, we're not paying for operational expenses and things like that. But when we have a grant application that says something like, it's going to provide funding for a slew of programming, that's treading a line that I think we don't need to be treading. So you need to be able to specifically delineate what single program or what single event you're asking for money for. Hispanic American Cultural Society does it. Palm Coast Historical Society did it. We know what it looks like. If there's a concert series, I know that, you know, one of the applicants said, well, we want to fund the holiday concert series. Okay, that's specific enough. But I think that things can slip under the crack, and it's much harder to make sure that funding is going to the right place if we are allowing grant applications and awarding grants on vague and ambiguous and very broad programming requests. This is how things get through that may not be in line with community values and may be less than savory. I don't think that that's occurring in our community currently, but that's how it happens. When we don't keep a close eye on how we are awarding taxpayer dollars, they can go to programs and events that we, up here, and by virtue of us up here, our constituents would not support in the community. I'm not saying that I want to censor. I'm saying that across the board, there should be an objective, very clear ask for the program and/or the event. It should not be, hey, we want, we want to support all of this programming. Another application said, well, you know, we have a goal of providing education and entertainment. Well, I'm sure all of them have that goal. That doesn't tell us what you're asking for taxpayer dollars for. So just, I would ask for consensus from this council that it, it be a little bit more tight on what we are awarding. It needs to be an event or an actual program that is identifiable.
Well, Vice Mayor, I think you gave two great examples of what light looks like, right? Very specific, project-oriented. I think it makes sense.
So Mayor, City Council, if I can interject here, I just want to make sure that this onus goes to the city and our staff and not FC3 because FC3 has buttoned down the previous grant process that we had in place for many years. So some of the same similar language that you see is because it's been a city grant for all the years prior to it being FC3. So we, as the city, will look at that grant criteria and outline and make modifications for the future hearing, hearing your directions.
And I apologize for that misnomer, I guess, in, in putting it on FC3.
I just wanted to make sure, because they're a group of volunteers who work tirelessly, and we, as the city, can clean that up if that's what the city council wants.
Yeah, I know, and I appreciate that. Again, I appreciate FC3's work on this. I just want to make sure that the communication is very clear now, because I think there's been some controversy, we'll call it what it is, based on probably a lack of expectation or a lack of clarity in communication. So the more clear we are, the more transparent we are, I think the better process we create.
I would concur, and I, I think as far as accountability is following up after, you know, we paid out to know specifically that the, the match and remainder is paid by the person receiving the grant is at the level it was supposed to be, and we're not funding the whole thing.
Right, because they are required to provide a budget.
Yeah, so I, I think it's about accountability and, and, you know, I'm, I'm all for arts and making, making sure we help the community out as much as we can. It's just following through to make sure we're not, you know, frivolously spending the city and the taxpayers' money. I have no, I have no patience for that.
And I think that, that information, that data should be available, right? Because this is a reimbursement grant, so the base, they, they've already spent the money, they should be able to provide what they actually spent versus what the budget was after the fact.
As far as the Vice Mayor's comments, I, I do think it's, that's why we have, it comes back to us. It's our responsibility to make sure that happens, to be honest.
Right, and I agree with you, and I think that's why I'm asking that the communication be very clear as to what the expectations are moving forward, because I think that as we've been kind of working through that, this process, it hasn't been that clear.
Right, and so if, if we communicated it on the front end, then there'll be less conflict on the back end when we get these, these recommendations.
And, and I remember someone saying, I can't remember when it was, if it was last year or this year, well, that organization is depending on that money. Well, you shouldn't be budgeting depending on money that the city may not have before we finalize our budget and we can make clear that we have those funds. So I encourage all the, and I had, I think, someone from the Cambodian Association contacting me, and I said, we've already done the, the process, but I will let you know when the next cycle comes through where you can apply, because I guess they got wind that the city had money to help organizations. So we'll see, we'll see where it goes. Anything else?
There's nothing more that's listed in the consent, but we had an addition of 23, and that was the e-bike ordinance, if you recall.
That's down, yeah, down here.
Yeah, yeah, so I didn't know if we needed to address that now. There was just one change that Commissioner Dant sent over. It's a technicality on the statute.
I think we should approve the consent.
What did I?
And then go to that.
Okay, I apologize.
Or the agenda.
Okay, any further concerns or comments on the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We got a second. We'll open this up for public comment. Anyone have any comments concerning the consent agenda? See if anyone can come forward. We'll bring it back to the dais. Ms. Cook, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. We'll open up for our last public comment.
We have to talk about 23.
Want to do that first, or just?
I'm sorry, I have the printed, and so mine's a little, mine's not as up to date, sorry.
I can just...
I see, okay, okay.
Real, real quick, so I can address that. Ms. Pontieri, I did see that, and that was left off your red line. It was in the actual public. Because when I, when I did it originally, when you guys gave me the, you adopted, I just did a clean copy version, made all the changes. But when you guys asked for a red line, I went back and made a red line version. That was not in the red line version, but it was always in the clean version. So that was in the published copy. I, I saw that email, and I confirmed it today, that it was in the published.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, so our, um...
Admiral Public.
Final public comment. Come on up, Mr. Admiral.
Because these meetings aren't long enough, so I decided I had a couple minutes at a time. Just two points of clarification, well, actually, one point of clarification and a comment. I do know it's a confidential, the word you used, the agreement you came to for the, if it's monetary, where is that money going? Because it came out of an impact fee, which is a fee that is kind of restricted on what it can be used. So if it is, if it is a monetary issue, is that money being returned? Or if not, where is it going? Is it general fund or something else? And then the other thing is, last week, I wasn't here, but I heard the, talk about reducing the speed limits and the money it would cost and possibly having to take money away from other projects that are priorities, such as our micro-surfacing. At the end of the day, I don't think it's the, speed limit's the issue, it's everyone breaking the speed limit. We just gave the sheriff an increase for enhanced services. Maybe that might be for this next year at least, and look at it again for next year as opposed to taking money away from a project that we were way behind on, like resurfacing, that we can maybe talk to the sheriff's department and specifically say, hey, we've got our enhanced service, we added two and a half, $3 million, and we allocate specifically to reducing speed. Again, it's not the speed limit that is the problem, I believe. It's the speeders who, no matter what you put the limit at, is not going to solve anything. And they're going to still be speeding by at the same speed. So that's just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? You should have already been queued up. You just sit back there, want to strut up here like you're hot shot. Yes, Mr. Webb?
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. You know, partnering a little bit with what Tony was talking about. I fail to see the value, excuse me, in all of the efforts that you guys are doing with all of these ordinances, when I find that most of them are unenforceable. I'll give you an example. Age 11 for a e-bike. From my research, the Flagler County School Identification, which you appear to be relying on, does not have an age on it as a grade. The reflection of paint, don't want to go through that again, required a special tool that Barbara Grossman and her group didn't even have. We continually try to fix a problem, and I'm not saying that there aren't problems we need to be focusing on, and we write these ordinances that are completely unenforceable. As Tony brought out with the one we just did today, the expectation that a citizen can understand and interpret what is and isn't allowed in a business vehicle while they're walking their dog at night is impossible. We talked about the chickens, but we learned that none of our enforcement agents have the ability or the authority to peek over a fence to see if they're in compliance. Not enforceable. I don't know about you, but I raised two very exceptionally brilliant boys, and before I ever set a rule or an expectation, I would ponder for a moment and ask myself, how am I going to enforce what I'm about to tell my son what to do? I want you home after school, but I'm working all day. I don't know whether he's home or not. So I ask you to take a breath and consider these ordinances and these goals or objectives or problem-solving efforts and ask, as Tony said, doesn't matter what the speed limit is, if there's no one there to enforce it, the public is going to drive as comfortable as they are. So I applaud what you're trying to do, but you need to ask yourself, as the sheriff Staley said recently, we need to train the citizens on what these e-bike rules are going to be, because they are going to help us enforce those ordinances. Really? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? See if anyone can come back, coming forward. We'll bring it back to the dais. City manager, where does, where does the funds go once that we receive that settlement? Does it go back into that?
We would have to reevaluate once the case is final.
Okay. Is that proper? Yes, the hip hop. Mr. Webb, I think as far as the kids and the ID card, that at least, if an officer stops one of them, can ID who the kid is, and they can follow up with their parent. Because I'm sure the, the police officer or the sheriff's deputy is probably going to follow up the parent anyway, because they're not going to issue an 11-year-old citation that would require them to go, go into court. Anything for the council?
Just wanted to mention that in the last month, there was a discussion at the TPO Executive Committee about some of the vacancies they had, and so I was nominated by the Executive Committee and accepted a nomination to that. So hopefully, that allows us to exert a little bit more influence on the F dot dollars that are being used in TPO and the local regional area. So just wanted to pass that on. Have a TPO general meeting tomorrow, and then the executive committee meetings are the first Wednesday of every month. So just looking forward to serving Palm Coast and Flagler in general there.
Okay, Councilman Miller moved in the items, not on the agenda.
Also, the Gators fired their head coach, so fans rejoice, and we're ready to move forward with a new hire.
What was his payout? 30 million?
20 million.
He's all right.
50% of that due within 30 days.
Any, any other discussion by council?
Just really quickly, I want to thank everybody that was here for the proclamations. Again, I really commend council and staff for highlighting so many wonderful contributors to our community. And then we had our quarterly TDC meeting. Elite Soccer was there, and they were basically presenting on the fact that, yes, they're having a tournament come here, and it is an economic driver for us, but that they are really, really handcuffed at the lack of field space, and particularly the lack of lights on a large portion of the fields out at Indian Trails. So, you know, just start to think about, and I asked, I got her contact information so that we can talk about how prohibited they actually are. Only a portion of the teams and games that they could otherwise accommodate can actually be accommodated due to our limitations. So as we look forward to our SAP and looking at what we're going to do in our capital improvement plan, just keeping in mind that we're missing out on economic dollars. These are real economic dollars that could be coming into our community that are not because of our lack of field space and/or lighting. So just something to kind of put out there. But otherwise, if you have an hour or an hour and a half, I would suggest trying to maybe just put a TDC meeting on. It had some good information about, you know, kind of economic drivers in our community and some marketing efforts and things like that. And I think as we look forward to economic development and start to come up and think about SAP in the new year, it might be some useful information.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Last thing. We didn't do a proclamation on it, but this is Florida League of Cities Week this week. So we're celebrating, we're one to celebrate that for this week.
Thank you, sir. You think, Councilman Gambaro? I would like to mention something. This is for all the parents out there. We passed the ordinance for the e-bikes two weeks ago? Was it two weeks ago? The day after we passed that ordinance, I was trying to leave Island Walk. Barbara was out of his shop, and I'm sitting there to stop, getting ready to make that right-hand turn coming out on the road that goes by Salsa. This kid slams into the side of my truck on a regular bike, not wearing a helmet, and I'm stationary, not wearing a helmet. There were like three or four of them. So parents, please, police your children. And I'm, and I'm just looking at him, and I'm like, did you just hit my truck? And he's like, yeah. I'm like, did you do any damage? He's like, no. I'm like, okay. But it was like, who does that? A stationary object and a kid 13, 14 years old just runs into it without a helmet on. Parents, police your children. Don't let them get killed in a bicycle accident. City attorney, what you got?
So I am requesting a Shea meeting in the, in the litigation of Flagler County Palm Coast Home Builders versus City of Palm Coast. I need to seek advice in that litigation. We will schedule that to be determined, but in that meeting will be obviously city council, city manager, myself, and the attorney on the case, Mr. Jeremiah Blackham. That's all for me.
All right, thank you. And the ordinance for the e-bikes, you want to follow up, or we're good with that?
Yeah. Um, I, I already had made that change that Ms. Pontieri brought up. Uh, that was already there, and, uh, it's there for any questions you guys have. It was published two weeks ago.
And we can, uh, I don't know if we put it on our website or social media where parents can see it, Ms. Brittany, so they understand it. Nothing further? City manager?
Yes, I just had, um, one thing, we're trying to finalize the schedule for the city manager interviews. Um, we had a 1:00 PM public meeting, and just to confirm, you wanted the applicants to do a presentation and a panel interview, or you're just doing a panel interview?
I think, what did we do last time? It's like a small presentation.
Do, do you have a topic?
Yeah, I think it was-
So that we're preparing them?
I don't know, how, how they plan to lead, you know, with our comprehensive plan. I mean, but I, I just thought that the, the presentation last time mattered.
I, I, I agree, um, wholeheartedly on that one, because I think some of my opinions changed based on that. Um, since we had them do the white paper, if they want to be expand on that white paper, but just in a visual format, right, with public speaking and visual format, so that, um, they're basically still talking about the same thing, what their plans are for Palm Coast in the first year or two, uh, but they're doing it in a different way than what a white paper presents. Um, so that allows us to evaluate their, their, uh, ability to speak in public and communicate and, and present.
How many minutes did we give them last time for their presentation? Was it 10 minutes?
Sure.
Whatever the time, whatever the time was on the last one, that's a good idea, Ty, for the-
I think we each ask one or two questions.
You have two questions each.
Each ask two.
So I say the same format, you good with that?
Are, are we having one-on-ones as well?
Yes, we're keeping the same schedule, um, one-on-ones in the morning, and then public meeting with the presentations and the panel where you get to ask your questions. We won't have questions pre-typed up for you like Mr. Thomas did, so you would just bring your own questions to ask them. Um, and then we would do the meet and greet with the public, starting at 5 o'clock.
That's right, so he provided a list of questions, and then we all ranked them, and then he brought back the most important ones, I believe, is how that worked last time.
I don't remember that. I, I think that that format in general was a good format.
On that, uh, I'm just always concerned. I think the key, key now is the two people we have left in the process, I hopefully are hanging in there, and any indication we get that that is not happening, we need to know that immediately.